...to fill out one of these testimony slips. Written testimony can be emailed to testimony@council.nyc.gov. Again, that is testimony@council.nyc.gov. Thank you for your cooperation. Chairs, we are ready to begin.
Good morning, and thank you for attending today's joint hearing of the Committees on Transportation and Infrastructure and Economic Development on the topic of JFK redevelopment program. Thank you to my colleagues in government from Southeast Queens for your participation today, as well as I see we have members from the community here as well. Today's hearing is about the historic investment in redeveloping and improving John F. Kennedy Airport. This issue is of crucial importance to New Yorkers. JFK is an economic engine for the region that supports hundreds of thousands of jobs and generates tens of billions in annual sales and wages. But the communities that surround the airport, primarily Black and Brown, environmental justice communities, have for decades endured the pollution, the noise, and the congestion JFK produces. The JFK redevelopment program affords us an enormous opportunity to ensure the airport provides long-term economic benefits for New York and to do right by impacted communities and neighborhoods. Since it opened in 1948, JFK has been an essential gateway to New York City and the greater metropolitan region. Over the years, the airport has expanded rapidly, and it has increased capacity for how many passengers, planes, and goods it can transport. Currently, the airport has six operating terminals, which include 128 gates, handling nearly 62 million passengers annually, supporting 280,000 jobs, and generating more than $51 billion in sales and $17.1 billion in wages. JFK is operated by the Port Authority of New York and New Jersey. But the land is owned by the City of New York. We have a lease agreement with the Port Authority. Under the stewardship of the city's Economic Development Corporation, the city entered into lease negotiations for a 10-year extension. Be clear, without this renegotiation, it would not have been possible for this program to move forward. It is crucial we understand how the redevelopment of our property is doing, and most of all, the commitments agreed to. Notably, in January of 2017, then-New York State Governor Andrew Cuomo presented a vision plan written by the Airport Advisory Panel to transform JFK Airport into a more modern 21st-century airport. The vision plan noted that JFK Airport ranked poorly when compared to the world's top airports and fell below global standards. What was needed was clear: a wholesale revision of how JFK operated. If not addressed, the possible economic loss to the state and greater area would be devastating. The vision plan specifically outlined JFK's challenges, which fell into five broad categories: an unbalanced fragmented airport due to separately operating terminals, airport roadway networks that were often congested and difficult to navigate, inefficient airport operations, and increased delays, inefficient cargo operations, and increasingly crowded, congested, and unreliable transportation access to the airport. Without any improvements to meet these challenges, and given estimates that by 2030, the number of passengers at JFK is expected to increase to over 75 million passengers, it was projected that the airport would not be able to handle this growth level effectively. Thus, the JFK redevelopment program was born. The JFK redevelopment program represents $18 billion investment into the JFK Airport, including a capital investment from the Port Authority of $2.9 billion and a more than 5-to-1 leverage private investment of over $15 billion. It is estimated that the program will add more than 15,000 jobs to the area, with 9,600 direct jobs coming from the redevelopment. The main four projects in the program include a $9.5 billion project called the New Terminal One to redevelop JFK's Terminal One, Terminal Two, and former Terminal Three; a project with Delta Airlines and JFK Air Terminal LLC to develop JFK Terminal Four; and over $2 billion project in collaboration with JMP and JetBlue to redevelop JFK Terminal Six; and a project with American Airlines, Holt Constructions, and AECOM to redevelop JFK Terminal Eight, which has recently been completed. The projects would expand capacity for the entire airport while improving and modernizing many of the airport's terminals. Today, I am particularly interested in a few issues relating to the JFK redevelopment program. First, I want to understand whether the program is meeting its stated goals for contracting with minority and women-owned businesses. I have long advocated for increased utilization of MWBEs. Businesses across the city owned by women and New Yorkers of color deserve the opportunity to obtain major government contracts. Ensuring diverse businesses have equitable access to those opportunities strengthen communities and extends economic opportunity across the city. The Port Authority has publicly committed to a goal of attaining a 30% participation by minority and women-owned businesses in all program elements for all projects. We need to know whether the JFK redevelopment program is actively meeting that goal, and if not, what can be done to make sure it does. Second, I want to talk about how the redevelopment program can meet the needs and concerns of the Southeast Queens communities adjacent to the airport. The airport has long placed substantial burdens on surrounding communities. For example, my council district, which contains JFK, ranks 50 of 51 in noise pollution. Of all of the city's industrial business zones, the area surrounding JFK sees the most activity. Noise, air pollution, and congestion all have consequences for the health and quality life of the residents. Given the impacts on adjacent communities, I am interested in understanding how the JFK redevelopment can be used to benefit those communities, from job creation to educational opportunities to improve transportation options. Before turning to testimony, I want to note that precedent exists with the engagement of this city council's Transportation Committee and the Port Authority, dating back to former Transportation Committee Chair, now State Senator John Lee, and as recent as 2017. We invited the Port Authority to this hearing, but they declined by choice. The Port Authority operates JFK and leads the redevelopment program. They are an essential voice to this conversation. We were informed the Port Authority already provides enough information to the city. The Port Authority only meets with the community on their terms and with their selected agenda. Today, they refuse to sit for questions before the city's duly-elected council. The Port Authority operates on the city's land. I'm going to repeat that. The Port Authority operates on the city's land, and the impacts of the airport are felt most acutely by the city's residents. The city deserves the opportunity to talk directly and publicly with the Port Authority, to get answers that are so crucial to the health and livelihood of the city's communities. I like to remind the Port Authority of their public interest obligations. We intend to hold hearings on this matter, as well as other issues impacting the City of New York in the future, including LaGuardia Airport and the Bus Terminal. I am hopeful that the Port Authority will consider joining us, especially considering Governor Hochul's commitment to resetting the city and state relationship. Governor Hochul has established an important new tone, which places the public interest first. The governor's leadership team, Karen Keog, Catherine Garcia, and Stacey Lynch, have all done the same, and I am thankful for that. Yet, the Port Authority's posture continues to ignore that memo. I will say affirmatively, this committee has seen the reset through state agencies such as the MTA. Ensuring the JFK redevelopment is successful will require cooperation across the various levels of government, and most of all, true engagement of the community. In lieu of the Port Authority, I am pleased that we will begin today's hearing with a panel featuring Christopher Ward, the former Executive Director of the Port Authority, and John Williams, the CEO of AutoCase, Inc. Mr. Ward will offer crucial context on the background of the Port Authority's lease agreement with the city and the benefits the airport can generate for the community and the city. And Mr. Williams will discuss the use of community equity agreements as a means of securing meaningful benefits to communities adjacent to major infrastructure development projects. After they testify, we are pleased that EDC will be joining us from the administration to provide information on its role as the lease manager for JFK. I look forward to hearing from advocates and members of the public as well. Now, I will turn it over to my fellow co-chair, Councilmember Amanda Farias, for her opening statement.
Thank you, Councilmember Brooks Powers. My name is Amanda Farias, and I have the privilege of chairing the Council's Committee on Economic Development. I would like to thank the members of both committees for coming for today's hearing. We are joined by Councilmembers Kagan, Lewis, Riley, Lee, Ariola, Carr, and Wrestler. New York City has traditionally been a major hub for domestic and international aviation. New York averages around 50 million tourists per year, making it one of the world's most visited cities, and JFK International Airport is many foreign visitors' first stop in the United States. The city itself is over 35% foreign-born, meaning that a sizable chunk of our 8.5 million residents have strong ties to somewhere else, and they often travel back to their country of origin to visit family and friends. Since 1947, the Port Authority of New York and New Jersey has managed all three of the city's area airports, and in the decades since, it has invested billions of dollars in capital improvements into all three. Unfortunately, these capital improvements have not always kept pace with technology. In 2017, the Airport Advisory Panel found that JFK's facilities in particular were reaching capacity, and that the airport itself offered an inconsistent passenger experience that would need to be improved and modernized in order for JFK to remain competitive in the global travel market. In 2019, JFK had over 62 million passengers, 450,000 flights, and 1.3 million tons of cargo pass through its runways. While the pandemic temporarily reduced those numbers over the past two years, the Airport Advisory Panel's projections remain for JFK to hit 75 million annual passengers by 2030. If improvements are not made soon, JFK's demands will outstrip its capacity, and the airport will cease to be competitive in the global travel market. This doesn't mean just a lack of travelers; it also means hundreds of millions of dollars lost in wages and annual sales, and thousands of regional jobs lost for New Yorkers. According to the Airport Advisory Panel, the major challenges facing JFK fall into five separate buckets: inefficient terminal design, a disorganized roadway network, persistent operational delays, outdated cargo facilities, and unreliable transit options to the airport. The Port Authority's JFK redevelopment plan aims to address many of these issues by developing a more efficient roadway and airport transit system, building a 2-point-million-square-foot terminal known as New Terminal One, and expanding existing terminals Four, Six, and Eight to accommodate additional passengers, cargo space, and wide-body jets. The Port Authority also convened the JFK redevelopment Community Advisory Council to ensure community engagement in the airport redevelopment plans. While the Port Authority itself is not present for today's hearing, we look forward to hearing from the city's Economic Development Corporation in regard to the details of the JFK redevelopment plan, including actual expenditures and job creation numbers, specifics on how the community benefit agreements, and what the public can expect from a completed and modernized JFK. Before I turn the floor over to EDC, I would like to thank my committee staff, Senior Counsel Alex Polenoff, Senior Policy Analyst William Hognach, and Finance Analyst Glenn Martinelli for their hard work putting this hearing together. I'll now turn it over to our committee counsel to administer the oath.
Thank you. I'm Sam Brightbart, counsel to the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee of the New York City Council. We're going to begin with a panel with our first witnesses, Christopher Ward, former Executive Director of the Port Authority of New York and New Jersey, and John Williams, CEO of AutoCase, Inc.
I'd also like to acknowledge that we've been joined by Councilmembers Juan and Salamanca. And Councilmember Ariola and Councilmember Carr.
You may begin when ready.
Good morning. Thank you very much. With that introduction, I face a bit of trepidation, having been previously the Executive Director of the Port Authority, and the remarks by the chairs, while as other members of the city council speak to the pressing need for improved communication and cooperation between the Port Authority and the City of New York, given the pressing issues that were raised. So let me start with my testimony, and then I'd be glad to take any questions that you may have. My name is Chris Ward. I'm currently the Executive Vice President for Business Development for Bravo, Inc., an MWBE firm offering architectural engineering services here in the local market. From 2008 through 2011, however, I was the Executive Director of the Port Authority of New York and New Jersey, and prior to that, I was the Chief of Planning and External Affairs at the port from '97 to 2002. I also served as the Commissioner of the Department of Environmental Protection for the first term of the Bloomberg administration, so it's a familiar hall to be in, and I thank you for the opportunity to return. Today, I would like to offer you my thoughts on the emerging role of equity and environmental justice in the economic development and public infrastructure market, specifically with regards to the upgrade and redevelopment of the region's airports. I think most importantly, one of the messages that I'm trying, John and I are trying to deliver today, is these very questions extend well beyond simply JFK and the public and private community. This will be a question for private sector companies throughout the country going forward as we begin to understand the localized impacts of business. So again, we are speaking specifically about the JFK project and the Port Authority, but I do think this issue is relevant throughout the country as we think about reconstituting the economic relationship between communities and large-scale public infrastructure. So with that, I would like to begin with a couple of observations that will help frame the issue in terms of the Port Authority and the future of JFK International Airport. And I take this part of my testimony with a certain grain of sand, given the introduction that was posed. First, the Port Authority, as we heard today, has long been viewed as a huge but largely opaque agency operating outside of local influence and responsiveness. Ironically, this perception was likely, and remains likely, the result of the very creation of the Port Authority in 1927, and I do this as a bit of a history lesson only for the purposes of creating a strong foundation for what we wish to do going forward. But just to be clear, as a progressive era creation, the Port Authority was specifically created to avoid the undue influence of politics and corruption. The role of the two governors and the board was to make long-term public investment decisions without fear or favor to local interests. While that perception persists, and as we heard, sits at the heart of the issue today, I would like to argue that since essentially the early 1960s, the Port Authority has in fact recognized its local role and responsibility in key areas and worked to address that challenge. And I think the message that I would like to deliver today is that the world is changing, and the Port Authority needs to begin to consider new models for that engagement. But nonetheless, they have been involved in the very question of public investment, given infrastructure impacts long-term. And if the port has lagged in this work, I think it's important to recognize that it's largely the result of the dynamic transformation of the regional and national economy, with all of the resulting social and public policy issues that created the problem to begin with. Second, from a Port Authority financial perspective, we need to understand that the agency is essentially running on the fumes of the auto industry. The tall and fair structure which underpins the port's entire operation has reached, I believe, likely its financial and political limits. So in short, the widespread perception that the Port Authority is continually flush with cash must come to an end. The institution will not be able to spend its way out of its challenges; rather, it will be our own creativity to think new ways to create a relationship between the community and the Port Authority. With these two thoughts in mind, how should elected and local officials think about addressing the very real community impacts, as well as potential opportunities of JFK Airport? I think recent Port Authority history can provide a guide and a framework for the development of a new model of engagement that considers the fact that JFK is a linchpin in global commerce and the future of our online economy, whereby economic traffic is shifting from tunnels and bridges to airways and local streets. There is a social, environmental, and economic cost being paid by communities surrounding JFK that goes largely uncompensated as compared to the economic benefits that are generated by the airport itself. And to develop this new model of engagement, it is essential that we recognize that these examples are the result of the economic and social preconditions of the time. In the history of the Port Authority, perhaps the largest community impact project would have to be the creation of the World Trade Center, and the Port Authority agreeing to take over the failing PATH system as a straight quid pro quo for the financial and community impacts of a project on a wide scale. Today, the Port Authority continues to subsidize PATH fares at more than $300 million a year. Those subsidies accrue to an established community of users, but gain enhanced access to and from Manhattan as a result. In the early '70s, the city was falling into financial default, unemployment, and inflation, and Executive Director Peter Goldmark, in response, transformed the port's mission to specifically include industrial development as a job creation opportunity in impoverished communities from Yonkers to Brooklyn. Again, a straightforward response to the larger need for community revitalization. Both examples, clearly more regional in approach, but nonetheless demonstrate that the port has, over time, sought to address important social questions. Building on that history, the port was also an early innovator in the more localized community level, given two certain large-scale projects. These two that come to mind are the Local Environmental Mitigation Fund to address the potential negative ecological impacts of the 50-foot-channel deepening project. In all, the Port Authority funded more than $60 million in vital restoration projects. And when we think of the economic return to the region of what deepening does and for the shipping lines to call on the port, and today, the port is the number-one port in terms of container activity in the United States, the economic value of that deepening was enormous, but at the time, the community benefit was, from an ecological perspective, was limited to $60 million. The other project hused most closely to the issue of today, and that was the development of the JFK Air Train Project. In recognizing the construction disruption and long-term impact, the Port Authority provided $90 million in mitigation funds for the greening of the Van Wyk Expressway job development and site restoration. And I think it's clear that without this critical innovation, the project might likely have failed to gain approval, setting the new model that community engagement and development can, in fact, go hand-in-hand. The last example is the most critical as we move forward into the increasingly challenged economic landscape, and this was referenced in the chairperson's introductory remarks. And this is the Port Authority's pilot payment, payment lieu of taxes, paid to local communities. In effect, these payments are a community investment fund, albeit on a citywide level. Today, the Port Authority pays approximately $100 million in pilot payments, which go into the general fund and are spent according to citywide, not local, needs. Created during a particular period when the focus was more macro and not local, there is no reason why the pilot could not fund, on an annual basis, specific local community development projects to address the very equity and environmental justice questions we have. And most importantly, it is an existing funded obligation that, if redirected, would not increase the Port Authority's financial obligations or risks. I have provided these projects and framework to illustrate that, contrary to popular opinion, the Port Authority has and can continue to work to address the community impacts in a new emerging world of social infrastructure. But I worry that this is not enough, even within the opportunity of redirecting the pilot payment. Not enough in that the environmental justice communities often make contributions to regional transportation infrastructure, including JFK, that far surpasses long-term benefits they receive as host communities. Also, construction jobs, apprenticeships, and procurement preferences are viewed as compensation for impacts. They sunset as development is completed, while economic benefits are generated throughout the life of the assets for the host community. Michael Harrington, one of my great heroes, the American social critic, said that "A fair and just society is based on an economy of surplus and the democratic means of distributing it." With more than $30 billion in private investment potentially being spent at JFK by the private sector, we must develop a model of funding built on that investment and long-term returns to those who contribute to making them possible. In this way, the private sector prices any project; the new model must be embedded as a fixed cost of community impacts. Harrington really characterized the fundamental challenge. As the Port Authority within the regional economy has transformed and changed, we need to think of new ways of extracting the necessary wealth out of the economic development at JFK for the purposes of historically embedding that relationship in a positive way for the issues associated with environmental justice and equity. Thank you very much. I will now turn it over to my colleague, John Williams, unless you would prefer to take questions now or later.
We can hear both testimonies, and then we'll ask the questions. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is John Williams, and I'm CEO at AutoCase, a software-as-a-service company focused on the automation of economic analysis for investments in the built environment. To put it simply, we measure the value of public benefit associated with investments in major infrastructure projects. I'm also the former Board Chair at the Institute for Sustainable Infrastructure, or ISI, the force behind the Envision Rating System for Sustainable Infrastructure. I want to thank you, Councilmember Brooks Powers, and all the other council members present with us this afternoon. Before going any further, I want to stress that my remarks reflect my personal views and not necessarily the views of my company, our customers, or other organizations that I'm affiliated with. My comments are based on my experience as a practicing design professional in New York City since 1979. I'm also a veteran program manager for public-private partnerships, including the new Moynihan Train Hall, and I'm a leader in the use of cost-benefit analysis and triple-bottom-line economic analysis for infrastructure and building projects. At the beginning of my career, I was very interested in major transportation projects developed a few decades earlier. Those projects were dominated by the vision and efforts of one man, Robert Moses, the personality behind the story told by Robert Caro in his bestselling book entitled The Power Broker. In the book, there was extensive detail as to the vision, planning, engineering, and ultimately, the birth of what we now refer to as highway, parkway, regional energy networks, and park systems. These systems originated across New York State and were replicated in most other cities and states across North America. Moses planted the seeds that led to the current dependence upon personal automobiles and the demise of trolleys and streetcar systems by the middle of the last century. When I started my career in 1979... When I started my career in 1979, I joined a company that was part of the network of engineering, architecture, and landscape architecture firms that Moses turned to to execute his New York projects. Over time, those firms grew and put down roots across the nation. I was and I am incredibly proud of my start with Andrews &amp; Clark. Like its sister firms, there was a high level of emphasis on professionalism and design excellence. I could not have worked for a better employer. I recall walking around the office and admiring these large black-and-white photographs of projects that the firm was responsible for, and they included the Brooklyn-Queens Expressway and the Brooklyn Heights Promenade, Park Avenue Tunnel, UN Plaza, Jones Beach, Both Worlds Fairgrounds, the Northern State Parkway, just to name a few. There was one project that really got my attention, the Alexander-Hamilton Interchange across the Harlem River between northern Manhattan and the South Bronx. That interchange was just part of another famous project, or maybe I should say infamous project, the Cross Bronx Expressway. This was a project from the 1950s, around the time I was born. After the fact, I learned that it carved a canyon through a vibrant community made up of people of color, new immigrants, and working-class families. Those people lived together, they worked, played, and prayed together with their neighbors residing in the same community. Today, we think of this as one of the premier examples of an environmental justice community. Their essential connectivity was sacrificed so that people who owned cars and wanted to drive between New Jersey, Manhattan, and the wealthy suburbs of Westchester County or to visit relatives in Boston could do it as quickly as possible in the comfort of their 1955 Oldsmobile. That's the year I was born. By the time Moses fell from power in 1968, his vision was cast in stone. His methods and standard practices were replicated across the country and evolved into the way things were done until the National Environmental Policy Act of 1969 came along. Prior to NEPA, federal agencies were mission-oriented. Results were all about building infrastructure on time and on budget, and highways were to be over the shortest possible route regardless of who was in the way or how they were impacted. NEPA changed that by requiring that all federal agencies evaluate the environmental effects of their actions. NEPA was the catalyst for environmental assessments and environmental impact statements that we read about today. And of course, New York State and New York City have specific processes that followed in the tracks of NEPA, but they echoed NEPA's emphasis on how we assess environmental impacts. Now, in 1979, I was hired to be the community outreach person charged with helping to expand the Long Island Expressway through the borough of Queens. That $2.3 billion project, those were $1979, would stretch just three miles along the edges of neighborhoods that remembered Moses and the construction of the original highway in the 1950s and 60s. They recalled the letters that their neighbors got, that neighbors that were in the path of the project, and basically the neighbors heard that "We're going to take your home, we're going to pay you X for it, and you must be out by this date," period. They remembered that. Nearly 20 years later, we followed NEPA, elements of New York State's Environmental Quality Review Act, and the city environmental quality review process, and by the end of the community outreach process, we received unanimous support from all five community planning boards. And I was proud of that, and I was proud of that project because it reflected a new way of thinking about infrastructure and avoiding environmental impacts. But fast forward more than 40 years today, and I will admit before you right here that we, the process, missed something. We missed something. Beyond reducing traffic spillover into adjacent neighborhoods, that huge investment, $2.3 billion, did very little to improve the lives of the people who don't own cars or don't make use of the expressway. It did nothing to create green space, to improve mass transit, to increase access to affordable housing, or to lift people up while other people drove to their homes on Long Island. This really haunts me, and that's why I'm before you today. Those communities deserved more. Working with community planning boards on the LIE project taught me that community acceptance is key. Acceptance by key stakeholder groups along the way toward building community equity go a long way toward building community equity in the project design, as well as avoiding protracted litigation and ultimately securing support needed to see projects built that will be profitable with benefits accruing to the facility users. Now, as Mr. Ward referenced a couple of minutes ago, a new model for sharing benefits associated with development of major transportation infrastructure, particularly public-private partnership projects at JFK, is called for. Just as the environmental review process revolutionized project development over the last half-century, community equity agreements, or I'll refer to them as CEAs, will revolutionize project development in this century. Now, NEPA requires that any federal agency considering approval of a project take a hard look at the project's environmental impacts and consider alternatives and incorporate mitigation measures. NEPA requires that a specific process be followed, but it does not mandate a specific result. The process creates a structure for making decisions leading to better, more carefully thought-out projects, but it does not account for equitable distribution of benefits generated because of that development project. I should point out that the Port Authority is exempt from the detailed requirements of NEPA, but as Mr. Ward said, it has a long history of engaging and investing in impact mitigation strategies. Community equity agreements would help the Port Authority and others respond to 21st Century realities by addressing ongoing benefits as an approach to deliberately considering environmental justice and community equity early in project development. And when we speak of community equity, what do we really mean? Well, it has its roots in fairness and injustice, and we all know that not everyone starts from the same place in life, and the differences need to be acknowledged and the imbalances corrected as opportunities arise. The beginning of project planning and development, or the renegotiation of public-private partnerships linked to long-term land leases at JFK, are a perfect time to start. CEAs will voluntarily elevate long-term community equity considerations at a point in project development where their input and support are essential. It's one thing to design a project that does not disproportionately impact minority communities. It's another thing to design projects with ongoing benefits to host communities. That's the goal. That's the goal. Deliver a portion of project benefits over the life of the project to host communities that pay an ongoing price for their development. This broader perspective is already evolving amongst sophisticated developers with communities that they're working with to create new frameworks for engagements. And so allow me to offer this fictitious example focused on the creation of a new air cargo facility at JFK. For the project developer and their investors, equity means an ownership interest in the facility. It can also mean a seat at the table when decisions are made early in the process. For community members, equity means more than just avoiding disproportionate impacts. Will the community have a stake in the success of the project? They are, after all, the host facility, or the host, they are hosting the facility, they're providing workers for operations, they're home to supply chain links between the airport and final cargo recipients, they pay a big price for that. So what might their stake in the development look like? How long will benefits flow to that host community? As long as the facility ground lease lasts? Really should. How will the economic benefits enjoyed by the developer of the facility be shared with the host community? Will the community's views be sought in advance or treated as an afterthought in response to opposition to a project? If the community's views are sought, what process will be followed and will it be accessible and transparent? Will the project developer be open to thinking more broadly about the project's value to the community than would typically be the case? And we all know that the standard deal with host communities is always focused on construction jobs, procurement preferences, and apprenticeships. What happens after the construction is over? Could the project create opportunities for education and job training? Could the project address childcare and healthcare needs within the community? Could it contribute to strengthening schools and other community resources? In short, how will social and economic benefits of the project be measured, shared, and monitored over time? How will people whose voices have not been front and center in the past be afforded a real chance to make their points of view known on an equal footing with better-resourced stakeholders? This may sound overwhelming, but I remind you, the communities are left in the wake of major infrastructure projects in ways that can be overwhelming for generations to come. Again, think about the Cross Bronx Expressway. Or they can invest in engagement. That was clearly the case in terms of the, if you compare the outcome of the Cross Bronx Expressway with the construction of the BQE and the Promenade in Brooklyn Heights, a totally different approach to project development that resulted in one of the most magnificent neighborhoods in New York City. Private-sector companies, including developers in the example of JFK that I just mentioned, as well as the terminals themselves and their host communities, can thrive when they work together. This is an example of a broader movement in the private sector that involves engagement on producing environmental, social, and governance outcomes. Companies can learn from the communities in which they operate. Engagement in these issues is good for business and good for communities. So when you think of a community equity agreement created at the beginning of the development process, think of it as a process for community engagement, starting with public notices, involvement of elected officials and community organizations, the definition of the area to be impacted by the project, and possibly funding community representatives to retain advisors. The process, yes, it could take several months, but the result would be a negotiated agreement that clearly defines its purpose and the process leading up to it. It would address amenities and services, local hiring and wages, local contracting and materials procurement, education and workforce training, housing development and subsidies, and climate resiliency measures. The benefits could be linked to the economic success of the project with the community having a direct stake in the project's profit margins. The agreement could include monitoring and dispute resolution procedures to resolve disagreements through mediation instead of litigation. Sophisticated developers are already thinking along these lines, increasing the odds of it becoming a best practice. Project development initiatives that leverage public-private partnerships are ideally suited to play a catalytic role. Project locations such as JFK are in a unique position to tap the economic potential influence over a global supply chain that depends on access to metropolitan New York to complete the journey to our doorsteps. We all benefit from that access, yet some pay a higher price, including the host communities, than others. Let's make those economic opportunities a path to equitable communities. Thank you.
Thanks so much for both testimonies. I felt like that was a walk down history and it was great context as we look at JFK, but I think as it was alluded to in both of your testimonies, it also gives insight in terms of the future of major infrastructure projects in New York City. So when EDC is administering leases, how we should start to look at these opportunities. So just a few questions. First, for Chris, historically, has the Port Authority reinvested money received from operating the airports in the surrounding communities?
I think the answer to that is essentially no. The Port Authority's investments are directly related, as John was making clear, to the project itself. The Air Train Project was an exception where there was a segregated community benefit agreement for the Van Wyk, but generally, the Port Authority does not build into its project development the kind of host-community agreements that John was referring to.
Do you know why the Port Authority has been reluctant to do so?
Well, I'd like, part of the theme of what John and I are talking about today is that you can't ask people to operate outside of the historical experience that they find themselves in. And perhaps I'm being overly defensive, having been the Executive Director of the Port Authority, and I regret that the port decided not to be here today. When you think about the way the Port Authority has developed, it developed from the most macroeconomic development perspective, and slowly but surely over time, as we've gotten smarter, better at what we do, we've begun to realize the kind of issues that the airports or the bus terminal or the ports end up creating from communities, and we've refined that relationship over time. I think what John and I are arguing is that now the time has come that we break the historic model of community relations for the Port Authority and create a much more dynamic one, that we can't afford to see projects simply as a one-off and secure a $60 billion community investment fund for mitigation. We need to come up with a new model that's reflective of the economy today. You could not have done probably a community benefit agreement or even doing the equity agreement that John is recommending at a different historical time. The point is, this is the opportunity now to recast that economic landscape and build community benefits into projects at the beginning.
And do you see any type of mechanisms to acquire the port or that would, you know, lead the port to make such an investment in surrounding communities?
Well, one would hope that political leadership would bring the Port Authority to understand that their long-term future is tied to this kind of relationship. The port, particularly given its financial situation, really must find new ways to do business, must find new ways to connect with communities. I'm not sure that the city, outside of its relationship through the pilot payment, has any mechanism to say you must, although the Euler process for certain projects could give the council an ability to insist at the front end of a project that certain benefits be built into it, but each project would have to be dealt through the Euler process. I think that's probably the most significant point of engagement where you could begin to put these kinds of programs together.
And John, you spoke about the new way of looking at community benefit agreements, and I thought it was interesting, especially because when I think about JFK, even though it's in a redevelopment program right now, JFK is always being redeveloped. It's always going to be a neighbor and sit within a city center. And so, like, what could that look like at, for example, an airport? What could a long-term agreement look like and include?
Well, just as you said, Councilmember, it's in a constant state of flux. The Port Authority relies largely on public-private partnerships to redevelop the airport. They have a lot of power over what they require in a procurement with a private partner to develop a new terminal or an air cargo facility. If they decide that they want to provide ongoing benefits to the host community, that can be part of the procurement or the contract renegotiations, okay? And they can take into And they can take into account that, in fact, a land lease, for instance, for an air cargo terminal could be 20, 30, 40, 50 years. That means that transaction is going to generate economic benefit to the developer over the entire length of that period of time. Where is the community's stake? Because again, they're the host, they're experiencing the ongoing impacts. Where is the community's stake in that? And why not not only give the community a seat at the table in discussing this at the beginning, but in essence, give them a piece of the project that delivers economic outcomes that are translated into, for instance, childcare, or subsidized housing, or improvements in worker training, or educational systems, et cetera? You can carve out whatever you want at the beginning of that project, build it into the pro forma for the deal, and that's passed on to the global supply chain network. Now, I'm certain people would say, well, that would burden us and put us at a disadvantage. Well, tell me what portion of that network does not want access to JFK? Yet that network gains the benefits of having access to JFK. Why wouldn't the host community?
Thank you. And just really quickly going back to Chris, and then I'm going to pass it to Chair Farias and our colleagues. You spoke about investments in the community with AirTrain in particular, which is closely related to the redevelopment and the communities that are impacted. What did that level of engagement look like? And what was, like, what is your thoughts about how that process went in the engagement with the community? I know, I will say that the Port Authority has a community advisory council now. I'm not sure at that time if that was something that was established or not. But the Port Authority really has the control, like they set when that council meets, what the agenda is. And I've heard a lot of stories in the community, of course, in terms of some of the benefits from AirTrain, whether it's jobs that to today you see at the local Long Island Railroad at Sutton, or beautification along the Van Wyck. So I'm really interested, from your perspective, having had been the executive director, what that, and was it called a CBA? Or what was it called? What was the arrangement?
I don't think it actually even, I'm not sure it really actually even had a name. I would say that, going back to my earlier point, do I need to press that? I think going back to my earlier point, there wasn't a name for it then. And I look at then-councilman Leroy Comrie, who's here with us today, and I think back to the very conversation with the community. And, you know, let's be honest, Southeast Queens, African-American community has some of the highest homeownership rates in the United States for African-American communities. And here's suddenly this large project, which sounds like a subway train going, throttling down the middle of the Van Wyck, and everybody's going, well, just as John was saying, like, well, wait a minute. Why does this community, of all communities, have to now add on to the impacts of the airport, a train system going down the Van Wyck? But without a doubt, connectivity to the economic activity at Kennedy was critical. And born organically out of that, through groups like AMNE that are in Southeast Queens, and the political leadership of then-councilman Leroy Comrie, organically, a conversation grew out of that, that what can the Port Authority do to make sure that this project, which should happen for economic reasons, isn't so disruptive to the community? And so, it really was, I was the lead for the AirTrain approval project through ULRP, and it really was the creation of this fund to address the one-time impacts, as John has made clear, of AirTrain. What we faltered on was building it into a long-term, almost investment bank for the community. And I think what we're seeing is the evolution of the Port Authority hopefully being responsive to these very sorts of issues. And I gave that as an example that it was in direct response to a community need. So therefore, we have the will to do it. We've done it before, we could do it through the pilot. And I want to come back to one thing John said, which is so critical, that pricing the community out because we can't afford it is no longer acceptable. You would not say to a developer, you can't use concrete. In the same way, we would not say, you can't address the community, you have to address the community issues as part of a built infrastructure in the cost model. The cost models, for the reasons why projects are failing or are challenged, are not because community investments. It's faltering because of larger economic risk, long-term equity investments, et cetera. So I really dislike it when people end up saying, well, we can't afford to do that, when in fact, if it was at the front end, like the price of concrete, the community impacts could be built into the model itself.
No, I appreciate that. And I think, again, both for your testimony and just giving that historical context and a global perspective and vision for what is possible, especially as we look at other major projects across the city, but in particular, the JFK redevelopment. And so, I will pass it over to Chair Farias.
I, you took my question, pretty much. You answered my question before I was even able to ask it. I guess on top of that, I would like to know, have prior conversations ever occurred while you were there in regards to looking at the port's pilot and saying, instead of going into the general funds, let's create a completely separate fund where we can then dedicate or have more discretion over, you know, where some of this money is going and how it gets invested back into the community or what it's utilized for?
The answer to that is no. The Port Authority, having paid it, I think relied on the city for the best use of how those funds should be dispersed throughout the general fund. My point is a narrow one, but important one. One, let's be careful about what we do cost the Port Authority because of their financial issues. And two, the pilot payment is in effect a community development fund, although it just goes into the broader community. There's no reason on earth why that couldn't be more narrowly focused and funding specific projects in Southeast Queens.
Okay, thank you for that. Yeah, I mean, I agree with your, obviously with your suggestion. And I did just want to highlight or really thank John for including the Cross Bronx as an example. I represent Council District 18, which receives the direct negative impacts and lack of community intentions and deliberateness on the creation of a lot of the Robert Moses era infrastructure projects. So I really appreciate you bringing that aspect in, and I am in full agreement with what you folks are talking about today, especially as a District 18 native, as an asthmatic that has received negative impacts from all of that overdevelopment and lack of, you know, open green space and investment in community health implications, and so on and so forth. So I did just want to acknowledge that and say thank you. I will yield right now to see if anyone has any other questions and continue to ideate a little bit. Thank you.
Councilmember Lee.
Thank you so much. It was interesting, and thank you so much for Chair Brooks Powers and Chair Farias for holding this hearing. And it was interesting to hear you talk about the cargo facilities as a creative plan and solution. And I know something that a bunch of us have been talking a lot about, and this is sort of like a side note, is just on the whole, you know, illegal truck parking issue in transportation, which is tied to a lot of the facilities and cargo. And so, just out of curiosity, because I know that Councilmember Williams, myself, and Chair Brooks Powers have been talking about this a lot in our districts, but is there a way to, I guess, creatively think about the truck parking, you know, JFK as a possibility for that space? And has that been brought up at all in any of the advisory council conversations or discussions that you've been part of? And just in terms of, if it has been, are there any changes or adjustments that it has led to in the redevelopment plan, or has that been incorporated, just out of curiosity?
I wish the Port Authority was here because they could probably give you a much better answer than I could because mine might be slightly out of date. But I think one of the problems, the short answer is no. I don't think really the implications of what air cargo will mean in terms of its externalities, its local community impacts, particularly the issue of truck idling and truck parking. And again, the Port Authority has struggled to bring air cargo and air cargo projects to the location, and so has been reluctant, I think, to expand the conversation of how air cargo does have those community impacts. I think right now, as John alluded to, we're on the cusp of an air cargo industry that is exploding with goods movement. And for any projects now going forward, recognizing that trucks need to drive into Kennedy to pick up this cargo, needs to be built into whatever air cargo model that we're developing. And I know the Port Authority would like to bring more air cargo on airport to free up space, to have a more regulated, controlled trucking system for Kennedy. I don't think it's happened yet, but with where air cargo is likely going, given the Amazon economy, I think now's the time to start to stitch together a new fabric, if you will, around the air cargo facilities, which, you know, move out from the leasehold of JFK into Southeast Queens. But I don't think those discussions have really taken place in any robust way to date.
Okay, thank you. And just wanted to give a special shout out because I know folks from DOT and NYPD are here that have been helping a lot with the enforcement of that, so just wanted to say thank you.
Great.
I'd also like to take a moment to acknowledge, we've been joined by Councilmembers Williams, Rivera, and Gutierrez.
Thank you. There are no more questions for this panel.
Thank you very much.
And Councilmember Lee, with the agencies, will be able to ask that question again.
Our next witnesses will be Mikel Adgate and Andrew Gann from EDC. And I'll administer the oath, and I'll do it also for the representatives from DOT who are with us, Charles Ukabu and Denise Mendez. And from the NYPD, Deputy Chief Michael Pilecki and Michael Clark. I know you're here for answering questions, but I figured we can administer the oath together. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before these committees, and to respond honestly to council member questions? You may begin when ready.
Good afternoon, Chairs Farias and Brooks Powers, and members of the Economic Development and Transportation Committees. My name is Andrew Gann, and I serve as the Senior Vice President of Transportation for the New York City Economic Development Corporation. I'm joined by my colleague, Mikel Adgate, Senior Vice President in our Government and Community Relations Department. And with us today are also Charles Ukabu, Assistant Commissioner, Regional and Strategic Planning, and Denise Mendez, Director of the Office of Freight Mobility from the Department of Transportation, as well as Deputy Chief Michael Pilecki, and Director Michael Clark from the New York City Police Department. Thank you for this opportunity to testify about EDC's role in the JFK redevelopment program. John F. Kennedy International Airport is critical to New York City's economy. It supports tens of thousands of direct and indirect jobs, generates over $40 billion in economic activity, while connecting city residents to the world and bringing the world to us. Prior to the pandemic in 2018, JFK accounted for nearly 41,000 direct jobs and 278,000 indirect jobs. During the height of the COVID-19 pandemic, as you can imagine, JFK suffered tremendous losses with total passenger volume shrinking by 70%. However, JFK and the other regional airports rebounded just like New York City and has since regained passengers. In November 2022, JFK saw an increase of 34.5% in passenger volumes over the previous year. This included a 15% increase in domestic passengers and a healthy 65% increase in international travelers. These monthly increases followed even stronger recovery months through the first half of the year, reflecting a rebound in air travel following the disruptions that occurred in the two previous years due to COVID. JFK and New York City have enormous competitive advantages that the airport continues to capitalize on. First, New York City is by far the nation's largest consumer market, with a diverse population that reflects the entire world. It is a gateway for millions of tourists and provides New Yorkers with access to every corner of the globe. In 2019, the airport served a record 62.5 million passengers, over half of whom were international passengers, also a record. Even in 2021, during the recovery from COVID, it served more than 30 million travelers. JFK is also a major gateway for trade. Shippers with goods destined for the metropolitan area, New England, and mid-Atlantic and beyond often make JFK their first choice. And JFK has the most international traffic of any airport in the United States. Every international flight to New York City can carry cargo in its hold. Well over 50% of JFK cargo comes in the belly of commercial aircrafts, with the rest arriving on dedicated freighter aircraft. This enormous lift provides shippers with a cost advantage out of JFK from many foreign markets. Frequent service with multiple flights per day is available to key cargo gateways in Europe, the Middle East, and elsewhere. Additionally, JFK has specialized facilities that can handle almost every type of cargo. JFK has an unparalleled network of freight forwarders, customs brokers, and trucking companies that can process and ship this cargo and are familiar with the ever-changing customs and security regulations. Lastly, JFK has enormous room and potential for growth. With almost 5,000 acres, JFK can accommodate forecast demand for cargo facilities for the next 30 years. I now want to turn to the role that the City of New York and EDC plays with JFK. The City of New York owns the land that both LaGuardia and JFK are located on. We at EDC represent the counterparty to the city's agreement with the Port Authority of New York and New Jersey for both sides. The current lease began in 2004 and was set to expire in 2050. Before the 2021 lease extension, extended the time to 2060. Under the terms of what's known as a triple net lease agreement, the Port Authority has complete operational control of the airport. Through its operational control, the Port Authority oversees capital planning, such as renovations, as well as the current redevelopment program. The Port Authority is also responsible for all aspects of airport functions, including airside operations, asset management, maintenance, customer experience, capacity utilization, environmental stewardship, safety, security, and community relations. Many of these activities it carries out through subleases, vendor agreements, and concessions. On the other hand, the city, and by extension, EDC, have a far more limited role under the terms of the lease agreement. To monitor the Port Authority's performance, however, the 2004 lease created an airport board, which is empowered to review municipal air terminal operations against certain financial, operational, and performance standards that were established by the city and the Port Authority. The board includes four mayoral appointees and four representatives from the Port Authority. The airport board provides an enhanced ability for the city to engage with the Port Authority using key performance metrics, including market share for passenger and freight relative to competing airports, passenger and freight air services by global region, delays, and capital investment. And as I previously mentioned, in 2021, the city, in close coordination with local elected officials, agreed to extend the lease 10 years through 2060 to facilitate the ambitious and needed redevelopment of JFK that envisions a unified, interconnected, world-class airport with the capacity to handle a forecasted 100 million passengers by 2050. The JFK redevelopment will result in the construction of four new terminals, Terminals 1, 6, 4, and 8, supported by $15 billion in private investment and $3 billion investment by the Port Authority. Multiple representatives from the city family participated in the negotiations that led to the lease extension, including EDC and elected officials. Through this broad participation in this negotiation, a package of community benefits was identified and ultimately secured. With respect to workforce development, the With respect to workforce development, the city has set high expectations for the Port Authority to ensure that 30% of jobs are minority hires and 7% are women hires across all construction trades, as well as a higher 40% minority hire among laborers. We require best efforts to hire first from ZIP codes around JFK Airport, followed by all of Queens. We require new pre-apprenticeship programs prioritizing local residents in coordination with the Buildings and Construction Trades Council of Greater New York. We also expanded the Council for Airport Opportunity in downtown Jamaica and Far Rockaway to facilitate long-term local hiring. The CAO is a nonprofit trade association whose mission is to place local residents in airport jobs through job training, job readiness, and other services. In addition, we also secured a commitment to fund an office of second chance employment to connect formerly incarcerated individuals or those with past involvement in the criminal justice systems with jobs at the airport. When it comes to business development, we secured a commitment for the Port Authority to engage with MWBE contracting across their financing, construction, design, and operation needs, including prioritization of local MWBEs. We also required that they hire independent MWBE compliance consultants to focus on meeting, monitoring, and reporting on MWBE goals, as well as develop a business development opportunity center to facilitate local capacity building and matchmaking focusing on local MWBEs. To ensure that the redevelopment creates opportunities for youth in Queens, the city and other elected leaders included a commitment for the Port Authority to create scholarship programs for local middle and high school students and establish an aviation-focused STEM program at York College. These efforts also include the expansion of a summer mini camp in collaboration with the Eastern Queens Alliance that educates middle school students on environmental stewardship and sustainability. These students also participate in multiple high school career fairs annually and have opportunities through local internship programs. The 2021 lease also ensured commitments related to environmental sustainability. The Port Authority has committed to a minimum of lead silver at the new terminals, and the new terminals will transition diesel-powered ground service equipment to electric. During redevelopment, the construction equipment is required to be lowest reasonable emissions use, including limiting engine size, requiring electric vehicles wherever possible, and enforcing idling restrictions, implementing marine-based barging of materials to reduce local delivery trucks, and deploying low emission vehicle shuttle service from Aqueduct to JFK for all construction crews. Taken together, implementing these measures will result in a model for large-scale construction in New York. In closing, I wish to restate our sincere commitment to working with the city council and local stakeholders to ensure that JFK Airport not only is a premier international gateway for travelers and goods, but a continuing source of economic vitality to the community. We believe that the recent lease extension commitments, its reporting structures, and strong community involvement provide the right framework to harness this economic engine for the betterment of the surrounding community, the borough of Queens, and the entire city. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. Mikel and I are, as well as our colleagues from DOT and NYPD, are now available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that. So let's start with the Airport Board Agreement. Under its lease with the city, EDC has seats on the Airport Board alongside the Port Authority, as you mentioned in your statement. Can you let us know if all of the seats on the Airport Board are currently filled?
Councilmember, they are filled through the positions at EDC and Small Business Services.
And what are those positions and who are on the board?
They are the Executive Vice Presidents of Asset Management and Planning at EDC, the Aviation Director, and I'm playing that role today, and the Commissioner or the First Deputy Commissioner of SBS.
So that's three. What's the fourth one?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's two executive vice presidents, one for Asset Management and one for our Planning Division.
And my understanding is the Aviation Director position is currently vacant?
It is, but I am serving as.
Acting.
I'm acting Aviation Director. Yes, Councilmember.
So there are no community members on the board. Could there be community members since this is appointed by the mayor?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember. So as you mentioned, these are mayoral appointees. In 2004, these were the appointments at the time. We have raised this question with senior leadership at City Hall, and our understanding is that they'll be following up with you about opportunities or, basically to get back to the question on whether there's room for the mayor to add or change appointments.
Sorry. And part of these conversations, have we thrown around the idea of maybe the council speaker having a couple of appointments to ensure that there's community members and/or local community input?
That has not been raised yet, to my understanding, but we're happy to take that back to senior leaders in the administration.
That would be great. Thank you.
What duties does the Airport Board have to oversee the JFK redevelopment program? Just more generally, in terms of operations of JFK?
Sure. Now, one thing I want a little history, you know, prior to the 2004 lease that we're really operating under, the city had really no say at all, and we got very little in terms of economic benefit from the two airports. So the Airport Board was seen as a real reform, you know, that gave us basically an advisory seat at the table. So the way it's structured is the Port Authority has to provide reports on all of these performance metrics that I can, including, you know, how the airports are doing in terms of market share, passenger services, in terms of where the flights are going, that we're maintaining our flight presence around the world, cargo services and how they're doing, operations including delays, the capital spending, including the redevelopment program, the quality of services given across a broad set of metrics, community outreach goals, including reports on how the Council of Airport Opportunity and the other organizations that are set up to interface with the community are doing. And then in the 2021 lease extension, we added environmental sustainability metrics, including their ability to reduce emissions through those things that I mentioned in my testimony, as well as the JFK redevelopment community benefits that were part of that, including progress on the milestones relating to the MWBE goals that I also talked about in my testimony.
I'm going to come back to the community benefits in a moment, but staying in line with the Airport Board Agreement, how frequent are the board meetings?
They are twice a year, and they're timed to the release of those performance reports, which we get every six months, so.
So when is the last time you met and the next time you're going to meet?
The last time we met was in February of '22, and we're planning our next.
Last year, last February.
Last February, yep.
So you only met one time last year?
Yep.
Okay.
We have continuing dialogues with the Port Authority staff, but the next meeting will be coming up in February.
And are minutes taken?
We do have minutes, yes.
Where can those minute meetings be found?
So at this point in time, the minutes have not been shared publicly, but, you know, we understand that that is, you know, of interest to the committee and to the council. And so I think that is one of the things that we want to take back with the rest of the board in conversation with the port.
Can others from the city attend, like, any of us could attend any meetings, or?
At this point, they've been closed meetings, and again, that is, you know, based on how this was negotiated in 2004, when the Airport Board was created.
Who determines when you all meet?
Mutual agreement, but it's tied to the release of those reports. So they send us the report, we review it, and then we come up with questions that we can bring up with them at the meetings.
What information has the Port Authority provided in the updates?
They provide a wide array of data, including can a progress on the redevelopment plan. They provide really updates on all of the things that I stated, including, you know, passenger volume, cargo volume, how we're doing in terms of comparison with our competitive US airports and world airports. They provide, you know, the full panoply of things that they're required to. They have done, I would say, a good job in issuing those reports.
Is the Airport Board meetings subject to the open meetings law?
I actually don't have an answer to that. You know, given that they were structured in a way that they were closed meetings, I would have to follow up with you on the specifics about open meetings law.
I have a lot more questions, so I'm going to yield to some of my colleagues to get some questions out as well. We have Councilmember Lee.
Sorry, I'll ask my question again to this panel from the previous one as well. So just in your conversations, first of all, I'm just kind of absorbing what you had just mentioned, and I'm kind of wondering why the, especially if it's appointees, why the meetings, if there's a portion of them that would be allowed to be public, or if there's an opportunity to engage the public in some of the feedback that you guys are, that are coming out of the meetings, I would say.
Yeah, so there is a public forum that the port has that Councilmember Brooks Powers mentioned in her opening statement, in terms of the Community Advisory Council. And, you know, we, members of our team do attend those where, you know, the port does presentation, that council is chaired by Congressman Meeks and Queensborough President Richards. But I do hear the question that, about the Airport Board and whether that information can be made public. I think that is something that, you know, having these conversations with the council, we will take back.
Okay, thank you. And then I know this is going a little bit more into a somewhat, not direct, but related topic of conversation regarding, you know, the cargo units, because just wondering if it is being up to, if it's being met in terms of industry standards right now, currently as it is, and are there, is there an opportunity, and are the cargo facilities and systems being upgraded as part of the redevelopment plan?
Not directly as part of the redevelopment plan that I was describing, but EDC and the Port Authority have done two air cargo studies that resulted in plans, action plans to expand air cargo at JFK and to modernize the facilities. That has resulted in new investment, particularly the Aroterm project, which you may have heard of, but it's one of the first of the new air cargo facilities that's being built, and we hope will be, there'll be others as well.
Okay. And, you know, as I mentioned earlier, because the issue of the truck parking, if it has not been raised, you know, I would really want to see if this could be addressed. And just out of curiosity, has it been raised at all in any of the conversations? And I guess it's because, you know, with a lot of the more international shipments and all the, you know, industry and the way it's changing with e-commerce, I think that is also impacting the roads as well. And so just how does that all play in together, if you could go into that a little bit?
Yeah, thank you for the question. We're actually joined by colleagues from the Department of Transportation who have been, you know, really engaged on the issue of truck parking, so I will hand that over to them.
Thank you for the question. So after hearing a series of community concerns and raising concerns around, and electeds as well, around overnight truck parking, we recognize this is a citywide issue. The city kicked off a multi-agency task force around overnight truck parking. This task force consists of multiple agencies across the mayor's offices, NYPD, DSNY, DOT, EDC, DCAST, Department of City Planning, and the sheriff's office. The goal of the task force is really to come up with long-term solutions for, more sustainable solutions for solving the issue. Enforcement is certainly a critical part of that, but we recognize there's a need for addressing supply as well, particularly as there's only one public truck parking facility in all of New York City. The goals of the task force is really using sort of a data-informed approach to identify the areas, the problematic areas with the highest incidence, as well as potential sites for truck parking. This month, the task force will be sending out questionnaires to electeds, community groups, and industry groups as well, to help assess their needs and also better determine the most appropriate solutions. We are certainly on track to share more detailed recommendations from the task force this spring, and we welcome the opportunity to brief your offices first.
Sure. And just really quickly, how, sorry, when was that task force created, just out of curiosity?
Early in September last year.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Next up, we have Councilmember Williams. Hello. I think I'm a little confused because there was a lot of "we" language, and I never ever interacted with EDC on the creation of any of the things that you said in your testimony, so I'm a little confused about that. Do you have an explanation? Because...
I think you might be referring to the 2021 lease extension and the community commitments that were laid out at that time. And so, you know, in conversation with the council member, the borough president, that was, you know, really when those commitments, the MWBE goals and the environmental and sustainability goals were discussed.
Yeah, you said "we" require, and then you said something, "we" require new pre-apprenticeship programs, and then you said "we" also expanded the Council for Airport Opportunities, but EDC was never ever a part of any of those discussions in creating that.
So I'll turn it over to my colleague to talk specifically about the lease agreement and EDC's role as the administrator of that lease agreement.
But some of this stuff is not baked into the lease agreement. Some of this stuff just came out of conversations with the Community Advisory Council. And then you also stated that you attend Advisory Council meetings, and I know maybe you've attended the last one, but the program has existed for well over three years, and I've never ever seen EDC attend any of those meetings.
We have a mayoral appointee, and we have been attending, the Aviation Director does attend those meetings. Right now, we don't have one, so we may have missed a meeting or two, but our intention is to attend those. And I appreciate the comment, and we will be attending all future meetings.
Yeah, and it's a little misleading to kind of insinuate that you all were a part of any of the initiatives that took place. Maybe you were a part of some high-level discussions that might have happened at the port level in terms of intentionality around the lease agreements, but EDC was not a part of any of the things that you just mentioned in your testimony.
We were part of a negotiating team that was led by City Hall at the time, but we were very much, because the lease sits with us.
No, but at the time, it was Cuomo and Bill de Blasio, and they were not even really in... Anyway, I just wanted to state for the record that I have not seen EDC be a part of anything in reference to the initiatives that you referenced in your testimony. I mean, you swore yourself in, but like, EDC has not been a part of any of this stuff. Maybe there were some high-level conversations that happened with the Port Authority, but in terms of your role in creating any of these initiatives, like, you were not there. Like, that is like a factual, like, thing. Like, you were not, EDC was not a part of any of that. I remember one time, EDC was a part of one conversation in reference to cargo, and this was like four or five years ago. And in that conversation, EDC pushed everything off to the Port Authority and absolved themselves of any responsibility to address the cargo operations in and around JFK. So the next question, you mentioned the Aviation Director. Can you please explain the Aviation Director's role, like, full detail scope? Like, what do you actually do?
So the 2004 lease included a provision for a aviation... So the 2004 lease included a provision for a aviation liaison. That would be a staff member at EDC. And since I've been at EDC, we've had, we've had four aviation directors. And their role specifically is to interface with the Port Authority, with the airlines, and with the community on all things related to the airports and the heliports and the seaplane base.
Who are you guys working with in the Port Authority?
We work with Susan Warner-Dooly and Hersh Perik in the Aviation Department.
Okay, and what has been the extent of your role?
Well, the major things that we have done are the two air cargo studies that we did in the 2015 and 2012. And those helped form the basis for, you know, defining where air cargo expansion could take place at JFK. We also worked on the LaGuardia redevelopment program, including the U-Lerp that was responsible for allowing the new terminals to be pushed out towards the, towards the Parkway. So we have been part of all of those discussions.
Okay, and in reference to the cargo operations, is EDC committed to also looking at space in and around the airport to support cargo operations? So I specifically remember a conversation, and it was really focused on the property that the Port Authority leases out on airport property, but the city also owns property around surrounding areas of the airport. And when this question was brought up, EDC had nothing to say, and this was about four or five years ago. Don't remember the person who attended the meeting, but, you know, as we talk about an inter-agency task force, I guess as EDC is attempting to play a bigger role, it would be helpful if you all can commit to looking at other properties you have to support trucking around that area. As so eloquently mentioned, there is not a lot of infrastructure to support trucks.
First thing I want to say is that we do want to work in that manner that you're describing, that we want to be present, and we agree with what your statement. I also want to just take the opportunity to say that another thing that we worked on was Gateway JFK, the Industrial Business Improvement District. And that was also a major EDC initiative with our, you know, parent agency, Small Business Services. So, and all with the goal of, you know, being a greater presence in Springfield Gardens and addressing issues like the truck, the truck issues that we were talking about before. So we will be present.
Okay, my time is up, but I just hope that this is an opportunity. I know this is primarily under the Port Authority of New York and New Jersey to carry out this project. But I always felt while working for the JFK redevelopment program, it was a missed opportunity on the city side to support the program in terms of building opportunities for people, especially economic opportunities, for people to leverage the billion-dollar project happening in our backyard, happening on property that the city owns. And so I was a little frustrated to see that you all claimed to do all of these things, and EDC has been pretty quiet and absent on anything. And I always think of the lens of LAX. LAX, as they redeveloped, state participated, local LA participated, and creating plethora of opportunities for community members to be a part. We certainly want to hold the terminal developers accountable. We certainly want to hold the Port Authority accountable. But if we're all working in the name of helping New Yorkers access opportunities, building, you know, a vital economic system for our city, then I do think this is an opportunity for EDC to leverage existing programs. You have existing programs that can support the redevelopment. And over the last four years, I have not seen anything that EDC has done to contribute to that at all. So I hope that this hearing sparks something into the administration to leverage this opportunity and be supportive of the program from the city level. Thank you.
Yes, and thank you for the comment, Councilmember. You know, we certainly see ourselves as a partner with the committee and the council and the community. And I believe we have an upcoming meeting with you and your team to talk about these very issues. And so look forward to engaging and working closely together.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Williams. I was confused about that as well, because one of my questions from your remarks was when you spoke about the scholarship programs for local middle and high school, do you know if that has been established yet?
My understanding is that it has, but we have to dive into it and understand kind of where it's taking place. And I know the York College program has started.
My understanding is it has not started.
It has not, then that gives...
Right, so again, the, Councilmember Williams and I are both very familiar with this program, inside and out. And so when I saw that, I was wondering about the statement. And maybe you meant that these are things that have been committed by the port.
They're on paper, exactly, and we have to implement.
But not through EDC, but that's why I'm interested in understanding. And I think the committee is interested in understanding, because New York City has leased this property, so we have an interest. It also rests and nestles in community. And so how are we playing the role in terms of administrator of this lease to ensure that the Port Authority is following through? You also mentioned in your testimony in terms of standards that, you know, have been established, performance standards, looking at the financials, operational. So I'm interested in knowing what mechanism exists if the Port Authority ever slips, or if they are slipping, I don't know. But what mechanism exists to protect the interest of the city in this?
And it's really born out of that 2004 lease where we had no mechanisms, and now we do have at least the tracking of these standards. And I'll be honest with you, the role of the board is advisory. EDC's role is as the lease administrator, you know, of a triple-net lease. So what we are seeking through this is cooperation, a partnership with the Port Authority and with the community to, you know, with all this infrastructure that we have that comes out of the lease and the lease extension to get all these things right.
Now, during the pandemic, were reports provided to EDC during that time?
We, yes, they were. Yes, they were.
How frequently?
Twice a year.
So during the pandemic, in 2020 and 2021, you received reports twice a year?
We did, yes.
But last year, in the recovery, you only got one report?
We have the one report, and then there's one on its way that's late.
Okay. And what, and what information is just globally speaking in those reports?
So they are very thorough reports that includes passenger counts, cargo counts, you know, number of, you know, number of destinations served, how that's changed over time, account of the airlines, an update on the, on capital improvements both by the Port Authority as well as by the private developers of the terminals. And it also includes metrics like, you know, how clean are the bathrooms, you know? So it's quite wide-ranging, and it gives us a nice look at both airports. And as I said, it also includes now how well they're doing on sustainability goals and MWBE goals.
During the, oh, before I go there, in terms of the pandemic. So in the reporting, does it also include, like, the, when you said MWBE goals, is it a part of the construction, so the redevelopment construction will be included?
Yes.
And during the pandemic, in particular, 2020 and 2021, were, was there any activity happening at the Port Authority during that time?
It did, you know, it really did drop off quite a bit.
But did activity happen, is what I want to know?
In terms of...
Construction.
Not until the lease extension.
So are you saying in 2020 and 2021, no construction happened?
No, no.
Not even with American Airlines?
There was some, that's right, Terminal 8, I believe, yes, there was some work done.
Right, and Delta Airlines too. I'm interested in knowing what the reporting showed to you in terms of the participation. So it'd be great if we could get access to those reports as well.
I have that, I have that data in terms of MWBE participation, Terminal, at Terminal 4, Terminal...
No, you can share, but like, it would be great if you can provide it to us. I'm a visual person, so...
Sure.
And just to be clear, Councilmember, are you asking about construction activity only? Or you're, because I think the data that we're referring to is, you know, post-2021 and the redevelopment commitments. I just want to be clear on what we're following up with you on.
So the Airport Board was formed in the 2004 lease agreement, correct?
Correct.
So the reporting has dated back to 2004?
Yes.
So in 2020 and 2021, there was a pandemic. But you said that you received two reports each year from the Port Authority. I want to know what it shows.
Understood.
We can, sure.
I think there's a misrepresentation in terms of activity at JFK during the pandemic, that nothing happened at JFK, which we know is not true, because it was just a ribbon cutting at Terminal 8. So...
I'm sorry, I just wanted to really quickly ask about some lease questions. I heard leasing, and I didn't get to ask it earlier. So the lease states that the quarterly updates from the Port Authority to the Airport Board are supposed to include updates with regards to potential collaboration with EDC and the city to foster development opportunities. Can, can, has the Port Authority discussed those areas for collaboration with you folks at EDC?
Yes.
Okay, can you discuss what some of them are?
Well, some of the things we mentioned, particularly air cargo modernization. Also, you know, we have, you know, talked about the MWBE goals, talked about, you know, the sustainability goals in particular.
Okay. And then in your testimony, you mentioned that in 2021, the city is in close coordination with local elected officials, and they agreed to extend the lease 10 years through 2060. Is there any place in this world where we might reconsider not extending the lease? Especially, I mean, I think with their, lack thereof, participation here today and transparency on accountability on our city property, is there anywhere where we do not see ourselves extending the lease?
I mean, I don't think that's been contemplated. As Andrew said, you know, we see the port as partners, not just with JFK, but LaGuardia and other critical infrastructure that supports the city and supports, you know, economic development across the city. And so, you know, we, as, you know, we have these conversations with the council and with the community. We certainly want to get better in terms of not only the articulating the commitments, but also ensuring compliance with them. But, you know, we see that relationship as being one that is important for the city of New York and one that we should continue to keep strong.
Yeah, I mean, I completely agree with, you know, what you just stated, and I know it's definitely not on the EDC's responsibility to get the Port Authority here in any capacity. And so I say that to say, you know, we're having a hearing where they should be at the dais with you in terms of transparency, accountability, and answering a lot of these questions, and they're not. And I think their lack of presence says a lot more. And, you know, I'm always appreciative that you folks show up, when we need you to here, especially when you are hands-on on projects. But thank you for entertaining my question.
How much rent does the Port Authority pay the city?
Current rent is $153 million annually with, and there is an escalator, a 3% escalator every year.
How was it calculated?
It's, well, it's a three, it started about $90 million, and then it's just escalated. And then in the lease extension, we were able to win another $155 million additional by the Port Authority paying us additional rent over, until 2060.
Section 410 of the lease agreement appears to give the city the right to adjust the rent paid by the Port Authority. Has the city ever made any such adjustments?
Only in the lease extension.
And what does the city do with those funds?
So the fund does not come to EDC. As you mentioned, it goes to the city's general fund. And so we'd have to defer to our colleagues at the Office of Management and Budget about how those funds are specifically allocated.
So you wouldn't be able to answer to what extent those funds are currently redistributed into the community that's most impacted?
No, but we can certainly take that back to OMB and ask them to follow up with you.
Okay. I'm going to break to ask a question on behalf of some of my colleagues in government. What happened in the 2004 lease agreement that projected that Queens residents would have the full benefit of the $100 million in capital projects? What is the status of these projects?
I think we have to get back to you on that. The Queens Capital Fund is, that is, we are aware of it, and we will get back to you.
Okay. What mechanisms does your, does EDC have in place to ensure the lease agreements from 2004 and 2021 are wholly implemented?
The lease is, you know, as a triple-net lease, we do have remedies at our disposal if the Port Authority defaults. And they're traditional, you know, in terms of, we can default them, we can terminate the lease. It's highly unlikely that we would, you know, we had, I'm old enough to remember when the city did do an RFP for a new terminal operator for JFK and LaGuardia. And it really was clear, I think, that the Port Authority, because of its overall accountability to government, would be a better actor. However, you know, those rights and remedies do exist in the lease.
Which is good to know, because my understanding is that the Board of Commissioners had during the pandemic softened penalties for not meeting the MWBE goals during the COVID-19 pandemic. I'm not sure if the decision has been reversed now that things are opening back up, which it would be good to know. But when the Board of Commissioners makes that decision as its own entity, like, where does the city fall on that type of situation? Because the city, as you've said, has a high goal, which is not even 30%, but they got the 40% dynamic to it. So how is that then enforced or taken account for?
We have to say yes, and I think we were going through the same thing at EDC with our tenants and our...
That was not good, but...
Yeah, so I think, I think we've, we allowed it. But I would say that the extension provided us the means to then kind of go back to a better place, you know, with the high...
So when you say you allowed it, the Port Authority reached out to EDC and formally requested the ability to relax the penalties?
I don't remember that myself, but we can get back to you on that if there's any memorandum or any letters.
I'm going to yield to Councilmember Gutierrez.
Thank you, Chairs, for hosting this hearing. My question is regarding environmental mitigation. Southeast Queens is an environmental justice community. My colleagues here have been sounding the alarm on the importance of environmental justice and equity. I'm curious what each agency's role is in ensuring that mitigations, as the revisioning plan gets realized face by face, is meeting environmental justice goals. And if there's any detail you can share on any on-the-ground mitigations that aren't further going to disproportionately, negatively impact the residents in and around JFK? Thank you.
So first, I'll turn to Andrew to talk about the redevelopment plan in particular, and then I think also pass it to our colleagues at DOT to talk about the surrounding communities, particularly as, in related, in relation to trucking, so...
The lease extension did mandate that the Port Authority implement decarbonization strategies for all ground handling equipment, as well as implementation of electric vehicles wherever possible for, you know, construction activities. The barging of materials in and out to avoid local roads is also part of that. The barging of materials in and out to avoid local roads is also part of that, uh, agreement. Uh, the new terminal buildings are all, uh, have to be a minimum LEED silver as well. So, these are, uh, these are all the on-terminal improvements that, um, now are embedded in the agreement.
Can I, before passing to DOT, can I just ask a follow-up question? Um, are these, where are these, like, um, where does this live? Like, how do people know that these are the, the requirements that you all have to fulfill? And, and my understanding also is that these are like minimum requirements to meet, to reduce carbon footprint? Is there anything that you are all doing beyond the minimum? I just, I'm, I think with something as large as this construction project, I think it's necessary that we be bolder with some of these mitigations. And so, I'm curious if you are all looking at, uh, doing more because this, and I'm hearing this for the first time, it sounds very minimal. Um, so if there's more that we can expect because you agree, this climate change is real and we want to be better, I would love to hear that. And then, of course, from, from DOT, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, council member. I think, so, just to be clear, in terms of the, the implementation and the strategies, that does live with the, the Port Authority and not EDC. So, while there was, you know, negotiation and commitments outlined in the lease agreement, so that's where the commitments live, the actual, you know, implementation, the details that, um, is part of, uh, the Port Authority's operations, um.
But who, and who enforces that they're, they're, they're following this?
So, you know, as we discussed with the advisory board, we do receive, um, these, you know, twice a year reports, um, that talks about compliance and the strategies that are being used. So, that is, you know, it's advisory, you don't, you know, there's, um, communication between us and the port over that. And again, you know, in, in terms of the earlier question about how is that information made public, there's also the Community Advisory Council, uh, where the Port Authority does make information public to the community.
Oh, it's not true, I was just gonna ask then.
Just have to order in the chamber.
Okay. So, you're saying that that lives publicly on a website?
Um, so, I, again, since I'm not part of the Port Authority, I can't speak to the specifics. I'm saying that, um, you know, my understanding is that the Community Advisory Council is the public forum by which the port is to provide updates to the community.
Okay. And if they don't meet any of these, like, mitigations, what, what is the repercussion? And again, I'm fully aware this is from Port Authority, but you're here now, so I need, I need to know.
Right, so, I'll, uh, turn it back to Andrew to follow up on the, the response about the.
I think the answer is that we, we have a mechanism to track their responsiveness, and from what we're hearing at this hearing, this is, these are things that, um, we are very serious in tracking, making sure that they implement and do what they say they will do in the agreements from the 2021 lease extension.
Well, I'm curious to hear from that Community Advisory Board, um, if that, that all checks out. And then DOT, sorry, thank you, and that's it. Okay, thank, I, I saw you looking over, I was like, I'm sorry. Please, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, the question you asked, uh, I'm just gonna mention that this is the JFK redevelopment program, and, um, we're currently reviewing the supplemental environmental assessment, including a traffic study component for the JFK redevelopment program and coordinating with the Port Authority, uh, regarding the statements that they made in there. Um, we take that very seriously, but it's not the first time that we have, uh, looked at issues surrounding the neighborhood around JFK. I can say that, um, in fact, for years, we have done studies of the areas adjacent to the, uh, airport proactively. We have what we call area-wide studies and, in fact, the areas around most of our business improvement districts, which in most cases are adjacent to environmental justice communities. There are various steps that we take to ensure that we understand the impacts of any, whether it's deleterious, uh, uh, sighting of facilities or the traffic flows and volumes that go through those areas. So, in 2015, we did a Laurelton-Roseville transportation study of the area where we assessed, um, existing and future traffic conditions and developed recommendations, some of which have been implemented, some of which have been turned into capital projects that are now with DDC, some of which most of us see as we traverse that area that are ongoing right now. Also, in 2016, we did another study that was a little north of that area in the Springfield JFK area that, I think the border was on Merrick all the way south to, uh, the, the Belt. And then, uh, most recently, we completed another study on the Springfield Gardens, uh, Jamaica study. The main thing with these studies are that, uh, we assess traffic conditions. We, of course, we start with land use analysis, you know, understand what the land uses are. We get data on now what the projected new developments are coming in, in place, and we assess what the demand and, uh, impacts would be on their adjacent neighborhoods. Um, of course, I, we do have a limited role in that, including also understanding that there are truck routes, there's, these are, the demand generators are the, land uses are really what generate the demand because we're adjacent to a, a major industrial business area. Trucks are the major means of mov- movement in that. The challenge we always have is designating that the truck routes, that the trucks can stay on the truck routes and not veer into particular neighborhoods and then cause additional concerns, neighborhood concerns. But I must say, though, that during the pandemic, and in fact, even more recently with the growth of e-commerce, uh, we have seen particular trends that make sure that there are trucks, especially box trucks, in some cases larger ones, that come into the neighborhoods, whether it's to deliver a mattress, which can't come by bicycle, or as it were. So, we do observe these, but then when we get complaints, we go in and we look at what the issues are. In some cases, it's a matter of enforcement, and for those, we turn over to NYPD, and they have been very able partners in addressing some of these issues.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so I just have a couple questions for y'all. Um, so, according to the airport advisory panel projections, JFK's demand for passenger traffic could exceed its, its capacity by up to 3 million passengers annually within the next few years. For every million passengers not accommodated, the New York, New Jersey region, uh, and I quote, loses approximately 140 million in annual wages, 400 million in annual sales, and 2,500 jobs. Are these numbers still accurate? By your expression, roughly accurate?
I, I don't, I'm not familiar with those numbers, I'll be honest, but, uh, it sounds right, and I would just say that it, it was that kind of concern that led to the, um, the 2017, uh, panel and then, you know, led us to feel that it was important to extend the lease so that, to allow for the developments to take place.
Sure. Are there new estimates since the pandemic? I mean, 2017 is pre-pandemic, um, to gauge economic loss of the area if the JFK redevelopment plan does not accommodate the capacity?
I am not aware of that, but that's something we can follow up and.
Yeah, that would be great, because if not, we would, we would want to make that economic study or evaluation. Um, and will JFK be able to handle its projected capacity of 75 million travelers by 2030?
We believe that if the JFK redevelopment project is implemented successfully, as it's described that it will.
Okay, and I, just for the sake of it, and will it be able to handle its projected capacity of 100 million travelers by 2050?
Again, uh, that's the plan, and we will be holding the Port Authority to account.
Great. And to that vein, what plans are in place to ensure those numbers are met?
Playing our role at EDC and, yes, doing our job.
Okay, great. Um, thanks. I have, I have, actually, I can ask on behalf of a, a colleague in government, um, I think this is referring back to before Councilmember Gutierrez, uh, asked her questions, um, how often does EDC exercise its remedies process, if at all, and what triggers them?
There, there are certainly instances, I don't have exact data, I think the right answer is to say that we will get back to you with that. It, it has happened in the past.
So, we don't have an exact example or anything off the top of mind?
No, I'm not expert in that area. I'm not a lease person, I guess, but.
That's fine, we will definitely follow up.
Sure.
Okay. The JFK Vision Plan outlined five broad areas in which JFK encountered challenges, some of which I mentioned, inefficient terminal design, airport roadway networks, um, airports' operations and delays, cargo operations, uh, crowded congestion and unreliable transportation access. How is the JFK redevelopment program addressing these challenges and specifically, what steps are being implemented for each challenge, if any?
Let me just, my understanding is that the, the designs that, um, uh, that have been developed, um, through the Port Authority with the partners, modernized the airports in many critical ways, including really just the, the, um, uh, the demolition of the old inefficient terminals, uh, the combining of terminals, uh, into one, um, and really reaching modern, you know, world-class standards for development. And, uh, in doing so, also the, um, redevelopment of the roadway network, um, the integration with the, with AirTrain, uh, you know, will result in, uh, a much better passenger experience and the ability to meet those, um, you know, the, uh, the passenger goals.
Okay, great, thank you. And then, there are four major components to the program and JFK's transformation, um, including new Terminal One, JFK Terminal Four, Six, and Eight. Do we have an update on the current statuses of these projects?
The, um, each of the terminal developments, as, as we're speaking, is, are on schedule and are meeting their targets, but we're really more comfortable if that question was asked of the Port Authority.
Okay, we'll make sure to follow up with them. Um, I'm done for now, thank you, folks.
I just have a few more because I know we have folks from the public that are eagerly waiting. You mentioned about the decarbonization strategy, what's the status on that?
The, uh, the new terminal developments, we'll integrate those, and right now, we're waiting for the next report, um, to get the, uh, the status. We know that the overall goal is, um, to convert all of the ground handling equipment to zero emissions, um, but I don't have an update on that, council member.
And then, do you have any updates on the implementation of the Marine Base barging?
I do not, no, that was some, the Port Authority would be better positioned.
I said it was EDC.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so, in the lease, it talks about environmental community benefits, which is a really big issue in the district and the community that surrounds, um, JFK. And, um, I just want to understand, from EDC's perspective, what your understanding of what that could be? So, for example, um, noise mitigation, um, air quality, health studies, these are things that have come up. Is there a role for the city to play, like, maybe with our agencies? Like, what is EDC's, um, I guess, vision for that? And how do you understand it considering this was a part of the lease agreement?
We have participated in the noise, the, the Part 150, uh, process with the FAA. Um, we are, you know, we are more in an advisory capacity for, for the noise mitigation, and we will continue to track it. And that's, I think, another area where we can cooperate with the council, uh, and the local communities.
Yeah, because the, the benefits is the, is the term that's used in the, the lease. And so, I think there's an expectation, I would think, that EDC had of the port and a mutual understanding that there would be a benefit. So, like, LEED and all those other dynamics, electrification, those are great, um, especially in terms of the overall footprint. Um, but in terms of the community, like, Part 150 studies goes up to, I think, 55 decibels, when the community thinks it should go to 65. So, is there opportunity in that gap there for the city to play a role, um, for any level of government to play a role, or even the port and the terminal developers?
Yeah, I, I think that's a, a really important question, council member, and one that, you know, we see ourselves as collaborating with our agency partners, whether it's, you know, the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene, Mayor's Office of Climate and Environmental Justice, Department of Environmental Protection, um, the folks who are, you know, really leading the charge on issues related to air quality, um, noise pollution, and so on. And so, you know, in, in our role, not just as lease administrator, but also economic activity throughout all five boroughs, we, you know, see ourselves as a partner to those agencies as that vision continues to be, um, continues to be realized. Because I, I think the administration, um, you know, really has a key focus on environmental justice, and so, we want to be a partner, um, as that work progresses.
Thank you, and I just have three more questions that I'll run through, so, thank you for being here, thank you for, um, your participation. So, I'm glad a lot of my colleagues talked about the trucking and cargo, because this is a citywide issue. We're looking to have a hearing, actually, on trucking solely. Um, we have a number of bills in the council that we're looking to move around that also. But we hear frequently from residents of the neighborhoods adjacent to JFK that the airport causes considerable traffic congestion. Um, furthermore, we hear that commercial trucks making trips to the airport idle or parked for extended periods in residential areas nearby, including between the hours of 9:00 PM and 5:00 AM, um, when they are forbidden to do so under the city's parking rules. So, a couple of questions on this. What is the city doing to prevent the trucks, um, from parking or idling, um, where they should not be? What have the results from the NYPD's Operation Heavy Duty Enforcement that was announced over the summer been? Visually, it was amazing in Southeast Queens, quite honestly. We're just now seeing trucks start to come, um, back, which, you know, underscores the need for a more sustainable, long-term solution. And, um, I'm interested in terms of NYPD, how many summonses has NYPD issued for illegally parked trucks near JFK?
Good afternoon to both chairs and to our distinguished council members and members of the community. I'm Deputy Chief Michael Pulecki, I'm the Executive Officer of the NYPD's Transportation Bureau. Um, interesting to note, when we're doing truck enforcement, is that there is a section of law, uh, it's 4-08K6 of the New York City Traffic Rules, that makes it illegal for a commercial vehicle to park from 9:00 PM to 5:00 AM in a residential area. There are two different summonses that can be issued under that section of law. One summons is specifically for the larger-type commercial vehicles, tractor trailers, detached trailers, um, combinations. Those summonses would be issued under Finance Code Number Six, and that summons carries with it a $250 fine for the first offense and a $500 fine for the second offense within six months by the same operator. The other summons that we can issue to commercial vehicles is for smaller-type commercial vehicles, box trucks, plumbers' vans, things of that nature. And those summonses are issued under Finance Code 78, which carries with it a $65 fine. Last year, when we were analyzing our commercial vehicle enforcement, we saw that the Summonance Code Six, the violation to the larger trucks, was being underutilized. So, we began training our precinct executives at our weekly traffic safety forums, which is similar to the ComStat meetings that the department uses to drive crime down. These meetings are specific towards driving down, uh, collisions and fatalities. We began explaining these two different, uh, this section of law and the two different summonses to our executives, and we let them know, if you have community complaints regarding larger vehicles, that you should issue those, uh, vehicles the summons under Code Six. So, the results are as follows. Citywide, Code Six summonses went up 271%, 5,102 versus 1,377 the prior year. So, we were up by 3,700. In Queens South specifically, uh, we were up 246%. Um, 2,000, I'm sorry, 300, 636, scratch that, 2,202 versus 636 in Queens South. So, we were up a raw number of 1,566. With regard to the Code 78 summonses, uh, which are issued to commercial vehicles, again, to smaller commercial vehicles, we were up 53% citywide, 40,000. 40,175 versus 26,234. So we were up roughly 14,000. In Queens South, again, specifically, we were up 41%. Code 78s in Queens South, we had 9,397 versus 6,671. So we were up roughly 2,700 of those types of summonses in Queens South. We were also up in towing as well, if you would like those. Would you like that data as well?
Sure.
Okay. Total commercial vehicles towed throughout the city was 1,204 versus 683. So we were up 76%. In Queens South, total vehicles, total commercial vehicles towed was 318 versus 26. So we were up 292, or 1,123%. With regard, when we break out the heavy duty, the larger vehicles from that overall commercial vehicle number, citywide, we were up 192%, 658 versus 225. When we broke out the heavy duty toes in Queens South, we were up 2,100%, 180 versus 8. So we were up a raw number of 172. When we took a look at our toes for overnight parking of commercial vehicles under Code 6, we were up, well, we had 97 in 2022 versus 0 the prior year. In Queens South, we were up 62 versus 0 the prior year. With regard to the Code 78 toes, citywide, there were 328 versus 4. So we were up 8100%. And in Queens South, for Code 78, we were 188 versus 3. We were up 185 versus 6,100.
Do you think that this stems from the, the work that this admin has been doing in terms of Operation Heavy Duty? Do you think that's?
It was pushed very, very early on by the administration. And in Queens South, as you know, there were several initiatives.
They did an amazing job in Queens South.
What made them so successful is that they were able to identify a location where we could tow these commercial vehicles to, to store them for a period of time so that the owners could go to that location and reclaim them. And that's why it worked so well.
And to that point, I know in the testimony, or in the comments at this point, I can't even remember, but it was talked about about 5,000 acres or something like that at JFK. And I know we've created like somewhat of a working group to talk about trucking in that area. And I'm wondering if, as a part of your airport board meetings, you can also use that as a space to talk about expanding the airport trucking and parking there? And then with DOT, I would like for DOT to explore and report back to the council the feasibility of creating a special, ongoing task force to monitor and enforce the truck idling and parking in the surrounding communities of the airport. So that could either be a city-funded dynamic and would love to know what the dollar tax is, or it could be something the Port Authority takes on. Because this is, again, one of the impacts that lives beyond the redevelopment. But because of the redevelopment, I think my colleague mentioned about 100 million more people coming into my community. I can only imagine what that air traffic is going to be and the impact on the community in terms of cargo also.
And I just wanted to add for DOT, beyond just looking at the, the airport itself, trucking, I mean, as stated by my, my co-chair, we all know trucking and the idling and the parking in our communities is happening citywide, particularly because I have the Cross Bronx, the Bruckner, the Sheridan, the Hutch, the Bronx River, all the, all the great parkways and highways. We see a lot of the trucking surrounding my community as well. And my precincts are really great at trying to move them as frequently as they can when they have the ability, when they have the space, which is the most important part. So if we can continue on it or have a study that is a bit expansive on identifying locations that are not necessarily within our neighborhoods, adjacent to, even, you know, I mean, I'll probably get a call after saying this, but, you know, the Bronx is on mainland, areas like in Westchester County potentially, where we can speak to other local governments to see if that's a possibility. Wherever there's space to kind of identify where we can have trucking, parking would be super helpful. Thank you.
And I know the, the city has a trucking task force, correct?
Yes. Yes, we do. And in fact, if I may just pick up on the last point with regard to the borders, yes, that's one of the issues, concerns that have been raised in Southeast Queens too, that sometimes it may be, and that's part of the survey we will be doing. It could be that it's drivers who live across the border in Nassau County, and they park in our neighborhood and then go over. In other cases, we don't know whether it's neighbors, people who live, who work in the, who live in the area and just park illegally and all those. So those will be some of the things we're going to be looking at. I think with my colleague already mentioned that we do have a survey that will be, and in fact, one of our goals, one of our requests is to have the neighborhood, you know, council members, elected officials, be part of our eyes and ears as you get complaints. We'll want to get that feedback so that we can coordinate with our colleagues in the enforcement bureau with regard to implementation. And I think you also mentioned the Cross Bronx. And yes, we do also have a visioning study that includes reconnecting the neighborhoods. That's part of our issue and addressing some of the laterals effects that have been lingered for years in the area. So we recognize and take these very seriously. In that case, we actually got a federal grant to do that study.
Thank you for that. And be, be careful what you ask for. My community might just overwhelm you with suggestions and hotspots. Be careful. But thank you.
So lastly, since EDC gave a lot of the community promises in the testimony, and now it's written in the city record, I'm asking that EDC create a process to monitor these commitments that you referenced in your testimony, and a clear process in ensuring implementation now that it's on record. And with that, we're going to move to public comment. I will ask if we can still have representation here. We don't have that many public testimonies, but I think it's important for you to hear from the public on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next witness will be Senator Leroy Comrie. And we'll, we'll call up altogether Senator Leroy Comrie, Senator James Sanders Jr., and Assembly Member Khalil Anderson. Thank you. We can begin with Senator Comrie.
I'm going to defer to my colleague and seniority, Senator James Sanders.
Thank you, Senator. To Chair Brooks Powell, to Chair Farías, to the worthy council people, it is good to be back here. It's been a while. I must state that I am very sad that the Port Authority did not see fit to be here. And I think that that is a, just a symbol of the problem that we're having, just a, a sign that there is a problem. Anytime that there is massive development, a community that's there has to go through many different things. They're going to deal with added noise, they're going to deal with air pollution, they're going to deal with light pollution, they're also going to deal with crippling traffic. Our traffic, of course, is, is noted and well-known. The Van Wick is known as the world's largest parking lot. It's the only road that an 18-wheeler can take to get into Kennedy. This rule, of course, is flouted, flouted all of the time. 18-wheelers are always going into other communities. So when you say a massive mega-development is going to take place, you have to look at what are you desiring? Is this economic development or is it community economic development? And there is a difference. Economic development is building an airport. Community economic development is using the airport to build the community, to build the airport, but to can build a community at the same time. I must admit that, just as in full disclosure, I have been a critic of the process that the Port Authority has used from day one. I've been a critic. Usually, communities in mega-developments create CBAs, Community Benefits Agreements. So also, one speaker earlier said CEA, Community Equity Agreement. And interesting, we have to figure out what that means, but that's all right. The original CBA was built around the Stapleton Arena in Los Angeles, where it was, an arena was being built in a community of colors, matter of fact. And the community came together and said, "We will consent to this arena being built if we do it and the community benefits." And there was a Community Benefits Agreement that was noted. This model is widespread and has been used in New York and several different places, including the Barclays Center, had a Community Benefits Agreement. It's, it's widespread and well-known. The former executive of the PA, Chris Ward, said that the, the Community Benefits Agreement that, that they did when they were building World Trade was that the World Trade had to take over the PATH system. And that was a $300 million a year benefit to, by them taking over the PATH system. Now notice, if the PATH system, if the World Trade was that much, we should say, how much should a local community get? If you were to look at the dollars, the world, the original World Trade was probably built not that much more than the $22 billion projected for JFK. And if that $22 billion yielded a $300 million community benefits agreement, then the JFK should have contributed a significant, in the hundreds of millions of dollars. So, but a CBA, it's not that the community did not submit a CBA to the Port Authority. A CBA was presented to the Port Authority. It's not that no one in the community said, "We should have something for our community." This CBA, a 17-pager, which I just happen to have and would be glad, in fact, I will find a way to make sure the committee has it so you can put it onto your records, was overseen by Latoya Benjamin, who's actually sitting in the audience. And she and the community got together under the auspices of my office and made sure that there was a CBA that was presented to Port Authority. Port Authority rejected the CBA. And by doing so, they then created a top-down approach, unheard of, never been done anywhere in the US. They created a top-down approach where they directed it from, from when you meet, where you meet, what you talk about, what you don't talk about. They even tell you where to sit and what time to leave. So under those conditions, this Port Authority-controlled process, if they have taken this process, then the Port Authority is now responsible for a community economic development. Since they pushed the community and said, "We will use this process," then they have the responsibility to make sure that their process has a benefit for the community. I warned from the beginning that seemingly the Port Authority were designing failure, that their process would end in failure. I, I warned from the beginning, the process is not over, but as of this moment, it cannot be said that it had been a success. They, part of their problem is that they have no real goals that they set for their committees. They have few guidelines, and they say that, they, they say that this is something positive that will, will have no goals and no guidelines, and the community will come up with something. Very unfair to a community. How do you know if you're supposed to go for $5 or $5 million? How do, how do you know if you're, it's, it's just an unfair process. I still try to use their process, and I call for a retreat, a place where the community comes together and figures out what they want. The Port Authority shot it down. And they said that if, if there was going to happen, they'd have to be in the retreat. I said, "Wait a minute. We're not in a room when you guys talk about what you want to do to this community. How are you going to be in a room when the community organizes itself?" They said they ultimately, there was no retreat. So the blind were sent, were sent to lead the blind. No one knew what they were supposed to do, and somehow, they were supposed to come up with something. And to this day, nothing has come up with. And let's be clear, that process has been going on for more than two years, and nothing has come from it. Yes, there was a pandemic, but let, let the record also show that they still were cutting deals and money was going on. So, so if the money is going out the house and the process is not taking place, then you're looking out for one interest, the business interest, and not looking out for the community's interest. So many large contracts were, were signed during the pandemic period and have been signed with no community benefits agreement there. There's nothing in those contracts that say what those contracts are going to do for the community. And, and this, and if you and I both know, all of us know, that if it's not written, it's not real. If it's not in the law, then it, then the business communities will not do it. One example of this, one glaring example of why this process that they're having is detrimental to the community is you're building an aviation incredible airport. Jobs are being created. We've heard all of these numbers thrown about. But yet, our aviation high school, August Martin, sits in a terrible shape. Its program of aviation is defunct. And no one is talking about putting money into it. If you're not training the youth of the local community for the jobs that you're creating, then you're creating jobs for people outside of the community and have nothing to do with this community. And this is just the most glaring of examples. Now let me alert people that there is a difference between MWBE and CBAs. MWBE, of course, I know, I and, and then Councilman Comrie wrote it. We know what a MWBE. I wrote it for the, for the council when I was here. We, I wrote it for the Senate upstate. There is a difference between a CBA and an MWBE. The goals of, of what you're doing with a MWBE may have no impact or little impact on the local community while a CBA is directly speaking about what is happening in their community. So I would say to all of us, my friends, when agencies and authorities fail to look after the well-being of a community, then the government must act. Then it's the purview- Then it's the purview of the government to move in there. Whether it's city, state, or federal, the government must come in because its job is to defend the community. And I'm absolutely calling on the city, the state, and the federal to get together and defend their neighbors. These are the people who voted for us. These are the people who sent us. We were not sent by the giant corporations that are making money from Kennedy. We were sent by the everyday people who want their children, their lives and the life of their children to be better. And right now, we are not doing it at the level that we need to. I encourage all of us to defend them. Otherwise, history, as I close, history will recall that we were silent at major violence done against our community and that we spoke of, of Robert Moses and his destruction of local communities. If nothing is changed, then the record will recall that the Executive Director of the Port Authority, Rick Cotton, is the Robert Moses of his day. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, Councilmember. I want to thank Councilmembers Brooks Powers and Councilmember Farias. Is that the proper way to pronounce it? For the committee members and colleagues. I'm Leroy Comrie. I'm honored now to be State Senator for the 14th Senate District in Queens. And I want to thank the Transportation Committee and the Infrastructure Committee, Economic Development Committee, for doing this joint hearing. It's important today that we work to understand, and also have to thank Speaker Adrian Adams for allowing us to, and for the committee chairs for allowing us to testify also today. I'm going to read my statement, then add on to it afterwards. "The understanding, the importance of ensuring that the JFK redevelopment project continues to be one that will be future-forward in both the thinking and its conception and its implementation, and especially its impact on our adjacent communities that surround the airport. The redevelopment program and the need to ensure that communities that surround the airport are not left behind is critical to how we rethink our access and relationship with the JFK and the Port Authority. Unfortunately, as been stated earlier and by my colleague Senator Sanders and the earlier speakers, we have not had equitable access to the opportunities either through jobs, businesses, educational, or financial opportunities for our Southeast Queens community. Before the pandemic upended global travel, it was estimated that approximately 62.5 million passengers went through JFK in 2019, making it one of the busiest airports in the United States. The redevelopment program was estimated to exceed $13 billion back in 2019 and projected to create over 15,000 jobs. With these billion dollars that are at stake and are growing, ensuring jobs that will be equitably interspersed in Southeast Queens is essential to the community's success and the project's long-term opportunity. I am deeply appreciative of partnerships across government working to make sure this important development lives up to its promise. Leadership from across Southeast Queens, including Councilmember Brooks Powers, Councilmember Williams, Adrian Adams, and our elected leaders on city, state, and federal levels need to join together to focus on the need for a new day in our dealings with JFK and the Port Authority. We must ensure that we are getting the Port Authority to understand that they have to contribute to the full environmental life of our community, creating a permanent school to, an education-to-work pipeline from elementary school level through high school to make sure that our young people within Southeast Queens will know that there's a pipeline to education, a pipeline to employment, a pipeline to opportunity right at JFK. Senator Sanders alluded to the fact that we have an aviation school, August Martin High School, that I personally have spoken to the Port Authority about since day zero of this project, that they still haven't funded the first dollar to August Martin High School, which is deliberate in this, at this point because they haven't done it and they've been told repeatedly. The funds that have been delivered for this project should take into account the businesses across the community and incorporate the culture of Southeast Queens and the broader New York City metropolitan area into this project. Stakeholders have outlined today and previous times making sure that the future of their delivery of these funds back the community and supplement the community. In doing so, we will highlight the diversity in life that exists across New York for the world to see. As New York continues to be the economic engine of the United States and its cultural epicenter, we ought to ensure that we are pulling the love and passion of small businesses and owners on display. Whether this is coming in form of our projects throughout the airport, both large and small, through the new terminals, within the upgraded facilities, or showcasing the work of local contractors and their commitment to quality within the community, we must ensure that those abroad who come here finding solace knowing that in anyone from anywhere can be reminded of the true global footprint of New York City. From local food vendors to musicians and all who have traveled the globe or come from outside of the United States and brought their culture here to be cherished, they should be strongly considered and sourced for jobs at the airport from the surrounding community. With that being said, it is my hope that there is a comprehensive Community Benefit Agreement between stakeholders, those that are working within the JFK Airport community, those are working on, with the Port Authority and the local community, as been stated earlier. In addition, we bring a shared vision on the need for small businesses and minority and women-owned businesses opportunities to include concerted efforts to overcome the challenges small businesses and MBEs face, like securing access to funding, access to bonding, financing, and insurance. The 30% contracting goal cannot just be a goal. We must press for achieving that goal and surpassing it and also ensuring that the goal is not of the 30%, 20% W and not the M or the B or the E. Major goals need to be focused on making sure that there is ongoing engagement imperative to ensure that Southeast Queens communities realize the true benefits of this investment. I also believe that we must remain cognizant of the quality of life that impacts JFK. Quality of, I'm sorry, let me do that again. I also believe we must remain cognizant of the quality-of-life impact that JFK consistently has on our communities. This includes the environmental impact and the state's goal towards reducing the climate mission in the CLCPA, the Community Leadership and Community Protection Act. In addition, we must make sure that the concerns regarding noise, traffic, air quality, and other potential negative impacts are dealt with in a different way. We must do what we can to ameliorate these concerns totally. Working collectively across government, we can take steps to ensure that the relevant authorities, whether it be the FAA, Port Authority of New York and New Jersey, or federal and state and local government authorities, take our constituents' input into consideration and use it to guide deliberations and future plans. Given the best oversight is collective oversight, I want to share that my staff and I are listening to today's hearing intently. And by next month in Albany, Senators Sanders and I will be doing a joint hearing regarding the Port Authority. And we will incorporate points that you're making today and what we're hearing from everyone to deal with these issues in the coming weeks. I must tell you that on a personal level, I'm Chair of the Corporations Committee, which has oversight. And the Port Authority has elected never to come to our budget hearings. So we have the same type of access issues that with the Port Authority. And it's time to change that script. It's time to change that reality. The Port Authority should be here today because the city has loaned them, leased them the property. They have an obligation to speak to the city and give you regular updates on what's going on. And they have even higher obligation to come to the state and report on what's going on. Not just JFK, but all of the airports within the Port Authority window and all of the things that they're doing at the docks as well. The Port Authority has been totally focused on an old draft of what needs to be done to be responsive and a agency that cares about their communities that they're servicing. And now it's time, starting with this hearing, to hope to change that and refocus the Port Authority to make them a truly responsible agency that comes before the public and testifies on a regular basis about the billions of dollars that they're spending. It's not just JFK. They're spending, respending billions of dollars by building the new bus terminal that's being done. Also, they're looking to build new towers down at the World Trade Center and also looking at redoing the Oculus and other projects. We must hear from the Port Authority about how they're spending the billions of dollars that they're raising, even though they're raising it through the taxes that they're charging people through the airport. That's still public dollars that they're getting. Finally, I just want to make one correction. The AirTrain project was started in 1998, before I became City Councilmember. So, Chris Ward earlier gave me credit for the Port Authority, for the AirTrain project. That was done by my predecessor Archie Spigner. It actually constructed, started in 1980, 1998. And I started my opportunity to serve in the City Council in 2002. I just want to end by saying that we have a real problem that has to be fixed. It's, I was not surprised that they did not show up today. But the primary issue is that we have to change their thinking. We have to make them be more responsible. The numbers that they're claiming for MWBE are false. The numbers that they're claiming for community engagement is not done. They haven't done the project at York College yet. They've been moving people back and forth in circles. And I have to also agree with Senator Sanders. He did fight for a CBA in the beginning. He got pushed back. We deferred to trying to make this scheme work with the Community Advisory Board. It does not work. And I'm here today to say it's time to end it, along with Senator Sanders, and move to a real CBA so that we can get some definitive things that we can glean from the Port Authority. When they can give $300 million to a PATH project, when they can do other projects for dredging and they only want to give a number of like $40 to $60 million for a project at JFK, when JFK will consistently be in redevelopment, it's time to change the paradigm. So I'm here today to recommit myself as the Chair of the Corporations Committee on, at the state level, but also primarily as an elected official of Southeast Queens to make sure that the Port Authority does more for our community. Thank you very much.
300 a year, right.
Thank you so much to my colleagues who spoke previously and to Chairwoman Brooks Powers, as well as Chairwoman Farias, for having us here, this very, very important oversight hearing around the JFK redevelopment through the New York, Port Authority of New York and New Jersey. I want to speak to, and to, I want to speak from two angles today. One, speaking on transparency and government accountability for the Port Authority of New York and New Jersey, but also for the city agency, that is, city entity, excuse me, that is responsible for lease negotiations and agreements with the land that is being leased under JFK, which is the Economic Development Corporation. So I'm going to start with EDC and then go into my comments related to Port Authority. Earlier today, we watched as EDC testified and spoke to the issues that the committee had brought up as it relates to the redevelopment. Everything from the projects that are in the pipeline to the elements in which are supposed to be negotiated in the lease. Under numerous occasions, EDC misrepresented their role in the lease negotiations, everything from sharing that they were, and I think there was a correction, but sharing that they were the impetus of helping organize some of the benefits that came in the lease that Port Authority of New York, New Jersey is responsible for implementing. EDC also misrepresented the roles of the Community Advisory Committees as it relates to retaining and receiving information when Councilwoman Gutierrez had asked if reporting information is being made available to the committees as it relates to environmental harms and mitigation. And they said, "Yes, that is a false. That is a false thing. That is not true." And I had stated that as I was sitting in the audience. And so, the truth of the matter is, is that there is no formal mechanism to hold EDC, hold Port Authority of New York and New Jersey accountable to the elements of the lease. But unfortunately, EDC did not have the courage to tell the truth and share that there is no formal mechanism to hold them accountable. And this, this is an example of a dereliction of the duties of EDC because as, as the entity that is formally responsible for the business negotiations on behalf of the City of New York and lease negotiations, they're also responsible for our tax-paying dollars to ensure that those leases have a benefit to the community. This is not the first, second, third, fourth, or fifth time that EDC has been in a dereliction of their duties. If you look, refer over to the 2017 report by New York State Comptroller Tom B. DiNapoli. It was a report that looked into the New York City Airport leases. And it said that there's $100 million that was negotiated in 2004 for lease. And in that lease, there was supposed to be an airport board and $100 million, excuse me, set aside for community benefits and, and projects, excuse me, through Queens Capital Projects. And so, through that period, if you look at the report, a lot of those projects, even 10 years after, the report looks at 2003 to 2013. Even 10 years after that report, you still see that EDC and Port Authority of New York, New Jersey have, one, not had obligated dollars to those projects, but two, had no formal mechanism of holding Port Authority of New York and New Jersey accountable to those commitments. If you read on to the report, there had been $75 million of that $100 million for projects proposed by EDC. But there's still very little transparency and reporting as to where those dollars are and where those projects are being made whole. The Port Authority, the report also says that the Port Authority had not fully complied with the terms of the ancillary agreements, which included an obligation to provide information and support to the airport board. This is another example of how EDC has fallen on, fallen down on a job and are not being held accountable to the things that they're committed to in terms of making sure that the leases and lessors of the agreements are being held accountable. So I just want to be clear to the public that EDC, again, is the official unofficial entity and body that is responsible for major development in this city. And they have continuously, continuously been unable and inept at holding entities who they lease with and work with accountable to that. JFK redevelopment via, vis a vis Port Authority is a prime example of that. So I'm going to go into my testimony today as it relates to the Port Authority of New York and New Jersey and their commitments to the redevelopment. When we talk about quantitative data, $18 billion of investment in New York's primary international airport and JFK, it is established, it is estimated that the program will create more than 15,000 jobs in the area with 9,600 jobs directly coming from the redevelopment. This is what is being advertised. As part of the administration's plan to create the advisory council, it's also used to utilize funding between developers and the Port Authority to create lasting impacts with a nexus of development. But my question to the Port Authority, and I know that they're not here today and it's shameful that they continue to evade transparency and public accountability. And they have done this. This is their history. How much community betterment fund or funding exists for community benefit, for the community benefit? Right? This is a question that a Port Authority has refused to answer. And the sadness of it is that in 2001, there was an extension of the lease. And here we are again, the city agency that's supposed to have our backs in the EDC has fallen down on a job because they have not been able to provide an answer to that question. Next, as a part of the betterment funds and dollars, what initiatives exist? I know that earlier today, EDC testified a number of different initiatives. If you ask them, if you poke any holes into the initiatives that they named, let's talk about one. They said there's an Office of Second Chance Employment. Where is this happening? Where is this happening? Who's in charge of second chance employment? As far as I know, there is no one in charge of second chance employment because they haven't hired anyone. But EDC has it in the agreement, and they're not holding that entity accountable. And so the next piece, what is a long-term plan on each initiative? They can't answer that. Who created them and what's the process for community members and advisory members to revamp and introduce new initiatives? This doesn't exist. It doesn't exist. It's not real. Under new government and community relations leaderships, we have not seen any strategic planning or execution to engage priority zip codes. If we look at the process of the redevelopment, there's supposed to be priority zip codes that were, which, where, which local hiring takes place as well as local contracting in the meeting of MWBE goals. How many local businesses have gotten MWBE certified through the Port Authority's liaison and outreach office? No, right? Because they're not here. They can't answer the question, but this information is not being made available. I'm just sharing with the committee the constant, constant, constant lack of transparency and governmental accountability with public dollars. You also, I believe, the, the committee also asked about the airport board, which was supposed to be created by the 2004 agreement. And when it was asked, hey, is this board subject to New York State Public Meetings law? They couldn't answer. So this board, which is responsible for assisting in making sure that resources are getting out the door and commitments are being held, they don't even have meetings. They may not even be subject to public meeting laws. If, if I were someone, and I represent, you know, the airport in the state assembly, if I were someone just walking off the street, I'd say that some of the claims and the things that I'm sharing with you all today are scandalous in nature through EDC and through the Port Authority. The next question I had for the entity is environmental justice, focusing on that issue area. I know a number of committee members have brought up issues and concerns around environmental justice. In EDC's testimony today, they listed out a bevy of different environmental commitments, idling trucks, things of that nature, air pollution quality. And when you ask, did EDC participate in the 150 study, the Part 150 study with the FAA, they say yes. What does participation mean and look like from an entity that's supposed to hold the Port Authority of New York and New Jersey accountable? They can't answer this question. And so I have two more questions before I close. When I'm taking a look at some of the different agencies, community groups, and organizations that are responsible for helping with the workforce component of the redevelopment, what resources and dollars are being provided to ensure that true accountability and hiring is happening? When and if and when Port Authority of New York, New Jersey reports that there has been X amount of hires, local hires, X amount of businesses trained, who's responsible for keeping that data? Where is that data? How can we see it? Do we have a city agency that's held, that is held accountable and is making sure that those contracts are being enforced? No, 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 we don't because EDC is asleep at the wheel. And so when we've seen recent reports of contracting online now from Port Authority of New York, New Jersey after continuously, continuously pushing them, they're inept. The reporting that the Port Authority of New York and New Jersey is doing is from a standpoint that there is inequity. So that means there's a standpoint of natural inequity. That means that if there is a person of color, a black person that is hired on, on any other projects, there's also a person that is not of color hired on those projects. Is that creating true equity? We're not sure. EDC claims that this is happening in their statements earlier, but this is not. Last question, how many individuals, how many local individuals have been placed in construction-related jobs for the duration of the project? This is also something that cannot be answered. And so, you know, as I conclude with those last final questions, my overall statements and testimony today is surrounded around the concept that Port Authority of New York and New Jersey is not following through with the commitments made in the lease, and EDC is a culprit in ensuring that that continues to happen because they do not have any formal mechanisms of holding this entity accountable. So I am asking that the members of this committee consider investigations into the JFK redevelopment, whether it's through working with our New York City Comptroller to look into the financing and the contracts and the commitments that would be made in the city lease, whether it's working on the state level with our state controllers or even with the New York City DOI to ensure that EDC is not in a dereliction of their duty, which I believe that they are, on these projects and on the commitments made. You know, this is a very, very serious project that's taking place in our district. As I mentioned, $18 billion of investment, private investment on public land. And so we have to ensure that through this process that there's transparency and accountability. And we're not seeing that from the city agencies, and we're not seeing that from the quasi-governmental agency in the Port Authority of New York and New Jersey. The truth of the matter is, is that they don't have to show up today. They don't even have to show up to the meeting, the hearing that Senator Comrie and Senator Sanders are having later next month. And part of the reasons why they feel that they don't have to show up is that they're emboldened by their quasi-governmental status. So I think it's important that as we move forward with this project and as this committee looks into the testimony that I had given today and those after me have given today and those before me have given today, that there has to be serious consideration into improprieties that might have existed in this project and other things that might be going wrong as it relates to the accountability. Thank you so much to the committee.
Thank you for that. Just two things, well, three things. One, the questions you asked, if you could provide it in writing, because we're going to do a follow-up with a letter to the Port Authority and EDC with those questions as well as some other questions that we have. Also, just for clarification, the Office of Second Chances does exist. There was someone hired, but we will add a question in terms of has someone been hired in the absence of who was there, but it was operating at one point. And I agree on August Martin High School, but I will say the new Terminal 1 did make a slight investment in the beginning, which was $62,000. So I do want to highlight, you know, the work that the new Terminal 1 did with that very early on. That was very small, I understand, I see the looks, but it was, to me, very important to see the terminal developer, a terminal developer, take that type of action before even signing a lease agreement, even though, as you mentioned, there's so much potential in this, and I think we need to continue to have those discussions. But thank you all for your testimony.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman, for your focus and determination to hold this hearing today. I look forward to continuing to work with you as we change the mindset of the Port Authority to be a true community partner. Thank you, Madam Chairperson.
Amen.
Thank you. And we'll be in Albany for the hearing.
Thank you. We'll now turn to additional public testimony. For panelists who are testifying remotely, once your name is called, a member of our staff will unmute you and the sergeant-at-arms will give you the go-ahead to begin. Please wait for the sergeant-at-arms to announce that you may begin before delivering your I would now like to welcome Fay Hill to testify.
Am I on? Good evening. Am I on?
Yes.
We can hear you.
Yes, yes.
Okay. My name is Fay Hill. I'm the district leader for Community Board 31B, and I lived in Springfield Gardens for 45 years. And I, I remember seeing the macro of JFK, which was formerly Iowa Airport, developed around our area. And I, there was an, there is an impact on the, the ravish of our neighbors and the residents in Springfield Gardens where we are, the high percentage of asthma and upper respiratory conditions affected us. And to hear the hearing today, I'm, I am floored of what is, what is going on with JFK. But I'd like to know if this redevelopment goes forward, we would like to get benefit. I didn't even know that the, the city, the land or the property where JFK is owned by the City of New York. Why couldn't we have like hospitals, where we were looking for hospitals for our community, for libraries, for senior, senior centers and so forth, could be built in a, in a soundproof condition to avoid the noise from the airport? And we'd like to have a restoration of Springfield and Farmers Boulevard restored in our neighborhood. And we, we, we like, we would like also to have a lot of things done to restore our neighborhoods that have been, been rampaged with air pollution, noise, and et cetera. I would like to continue to hear more hearings on this project because of the millions of dollars that is poured into JFK, and this is handed out to rich corporations, and the community is, is, is left out, especially the community of color. So I will conclude my, okay. I will conclude right now, and I will continue to do my testimony and testify to this, to this committee. And I really appreciate our councilwoman, who's the leader on this, and our, our other elected officials. Thank you.
Thank you. And please submit the rest of your testimony in writing so we can have it captured for the record.
Thank you. I would like to now welcome Dr. R. Simone Lord to testify.
Your time will begin.
Are you on there?
Good afternoon, everyone. I trust that you can hear me, okay?
Yes.
Thank you so much, everyone, and thank you, Council Chair Sabrina Brooks and Senators Saunders and Senator Comrie and Assemblyman Khalil and everyone that has, all the other council people that have, that have been, that have been speaking up for us. So I am Reverend Roxanne Simone Lord, and I'm the president of the Southeast Queens Chamber of Commerce. I am on several of the JFK Redevelopment Advisory Council, and I would like to give my testimony. I represent hundreds of small businesses of color in Southeast Queens, predominantly African-American business owners. When speaking to many of them about the airport opportunities, many of them say that they are certified and they have not received any work or any contracts. Many still do not know about the opportunities at the airports. So by holding meetings, conducting outreach, and MWBE, ACDBE training here at our headquarters on Sutford Boulevard, we, the Southeast Queens Chamber of Commerce, we are striving to reach more entrepreneurs of color in Southeast Queens. In 2022, after the pandemic, the Southeast Queens Chamber of Commerce was contacted by managers, community leisure managers, Tunisia Morrison and Rachel Antoine. And we were encouraged to keep on speaking up and trying to go out there and help many more entrepreneurs in our community. These two young ladies were very passionate about this cause, and so they renewed hope and optimism in my board and I that people of color in tiers one and two of the JFK Airport would indeed be able to take part in and gain meaningful benefits from the JFK redevelopment. So the chamber initiated partnerships with Rockaway, Rise, and York College SBDC to lead more outreach in Southeast Queens in order to produce higher numbers of MWBEs. It was a winning plan, a winning proposal. However, in the middle of it all, we learned that Tunisia Morrison was fired for no apparent reason. Both the work and our hope halted because she was really very zealous in her approach to get more black and brown people certified, and we felt that we can trust her in this common mission. Is there any accountability or transparency as to why this community outreach manager at the JFK redevelopment project was fired? In addition to this, the proposal that the Southeast Queens Chamber of Commerce and Rise, again, far Rockaway initiated, was also shut down, and no reason was given. We know our community and we know our people, our community, we need community people at P A N Y M J who see us, can identify with us, and know our struggle. We know that the Southeast Queens Chamber of Commerce, Rise, and York College SBDC working together could create a huge paradigm shift in people of color really being able to be nurtured and groomed to rise to the occasion.
I'm sorry, Dr. Lord. One quick question, but we do have to wrap because we have a few more folks waiting to testify. You said something was shut down. What was, I missed what you said. What was shut down?
What was shut down is our proposal that we, the Southeast Queens Chamber, Rise, and the York College SBDC, we made a proposal that because we are in the community, we know our businesses, we see them struggle every day, we proposed that we work together to bring them in, outreach, true outreach, and bring them in, hold their hands, you know, help them to pass barriers to contracts, to different things that small businesses in our community have. We face different needs, and only people in the community, living in the community, you can't expect someone else in the community to tell you that this is what you need. So we know what we need, and so we three will set up a proposal so that we could bring our community what they need. That was shut down. So the only thing I wanted to say again is that we hope to see some more meaningful benefits. We need lampposts, we need more green spaces with beautiful flowers to promote peaceful lifestyles, we need to inspire and calm our youth.
I'm sorry, I'm so, so sorry, Dr. Lord. I'm going to just ask if you could submit the rest of this in writing because we have to get to the next few people that's left, okay?
Okay.
Thank you. I'd like to now welcome David Cockfield to testify. Is David Cockfield on? Okay, apparently no longer on the Zoom. We will then move on. I would like to now welcome Stacy Osborne to testify.
Your time will begin.
Hi, how are you? I would like to thank the elected officials for speaking for our communities, and thank you Sabrina Brooks Powers for being a wonderful chair. I wish, you know, by learning so many additional things that's going on, I wish my main question to the Port Authority was to question how often the noise complaint 1-800 number, that 1-800-225-1071, is being checked and also the submission that's done online regarding the, you know, the airport noise. I mean, I, I am a Rose Day resident, I'm like a president of the block association, and many of our community, our, you know, folks that live here constantly saying, oh, well, we call, we have complained, and there's kind of no relief in the noise complaint. There's, there's no form of saying, okay, between six and eight, it's going to be quiet. I thought the brunt of the noise was supposed to be shared between us, you know, Nassau and so forth, but it's just no relief of the noise, and it's just becoming overbearing. So that was the major thing, but they're not there to answer that question of how often, you know, if it's being checked that we're calling in to complain so something could be done. So that's one thing. Another thing is the, the truck issues we're having, Springfield Boulevard, Brookville Boulevard, I mean, it's an influx of, it's not just nights, it's during the days. I could clearly say for Brookville Boulevard, box trucks, commercial trucks are being parked there, and that's a major issue, and I'm very happy that that was brought up during this, this testimony.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I would now like to welcome Kenrick Williams to testify.
Your time will- Your time will begin.
Is Kenrick Williams on?
Yes, he's on. He's just not unmuting.
Try one more time, is Kenrick Williams on?
Kenrick, we're sending you a request on mute.
Okay, we can mute, we can move on. Finally, I'd like to welcome Yvette to testify.
Your time will begin.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for taking my call. My Port Authority of New York, New Jersey was just spoken about by the three legislators, state legislators that were on, and I think that's something very important, and the questions that were asked were extremely important. As a HVAC minority business metropolis, HVAC contractors, we are certified with Port Authority of New York and New Jersey. We are looking into putting in for jobs at JFK Airport, but one of the things that they do is they have what's called prequalifications, and you have to submit these prequalifications over and over and over for various companies that are working. And it's very seldom, if ever, you get called. So the questions and comments that were made earlier are definitely appropriate, so there should be some oversight with regards to that. And so as I listen to the hearing and the points made, I think that's something that should be looked into. And if the land is actually owned by the city and they are the leasing, there should be some accountability. And I'd like to know what can the council do to ensure accountability and to ensure that minority business owners who are bidding or would like to bid on some of the projects, how they can be handled, and that the projects that they're allowed to bid on are appropriate size for the entities. Because sometimes they're too big to where a small minority contractor cannot bid on them because they're too large. And so if there's a way that the jobs can be broken down to where the contractors that are minority and certified can actually participate. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. And I'd like to try again to call on Kenrick Williams to testify. Okay, if not there, we can move on to closing out. Oh, Mr. Williams, are you, are you there? Says you're unmuted. Okay, we're going to move on to closing out. If we have inadvertently missed anyone that has registered to testify today and has yet to be called, please use the Zoom hand function if you're testifying remotely, and you'll be called in the order that your hand has been raised. Or if you're testifying in person, please come to the dais. Seeing none, I'll now turn over to Chair Brooks Powers for closing remarks.
So before I close, I want to shout out EDC for staying here for this hearing. We appreciate it and your presence and commitment to working with us on this. And with that, this hearing is closed.
Ending webinar.